Morning, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, April 1st, 2024. It is 9:00 a.m. All council members are present: Town Attorney, Town Clerk, Town Manager. Frankie? Please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we gather here to make decisions that affect our citizens and island, we ask you to lift your heads, open your eyes, and open your hearts. Our most serious duty is to look to the community we share, the examples we make, and the legacies we leave. That should be our greatest, most courageous, and noble intention. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you can remember to silence your phones, just in case. I always forget, so I just want to remind everyone. Next, we have approval of final agenda. Is there a motion to approve the final agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to pull a couple of items off the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Which ones?
B and E, please.
B and...
B.
E? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to also pull F, G, H, and I, just for informational purposes.
Ah, let's see.
F, G, H, I.
So we're basically pulling all of them, for the most part.
Yes, and then we do have to pull A, just because there's a slight change in it. So, A as well. So the only ones not being pulled are C and D evidently?
Yep.
All right. We can consent to that.
I'll move to approve the final agenda.
Got a motion. Motion by Councilor King, second one by Councilor Safford. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Next, we have public comment. Madam Clerk?
You want to do the consent item? Or... Oh, we went out. Oh, got it, sorry.
Ah, wasn't me this time.
Okay, first up is Kathy Turner, and following Kathy will be Joseph Puglies.
Good morning. Kathy Turner, on behalf of the Estero Island Garden Club. On August 10th, 2023, by invitation of the Town Council, we had a discussion of EIGC providing advisory services to the town of Fort Myers Beach. As a result of that discussion, Vice Mayor Adahol directed the Town to work with the Garden Club on matters of vegetation. Councilor Veach tagged the... Former Councilor Veach tagged the Garden Club initiatives as Regreen FMB, and that remains an objective of the Garden Club. Since then, we have designed and planted the garden at this historical society. We cleaned up and added around 150 plants to the Ann Reasoner Memorial Garden at Bay Oaks Recreation Center. And just eight days ago, we cleaned up and planted the Times Square Garden behind the Wavy Wall. It consisted of a garden going of around 160 feet, where we planted over 200 plants, some of them 400 to 500 pounds. We laid out 280 bags of mulch. The planting and the design of the garden, plus the approvals by the town and the county, took five months. The actual planting took four hours. It's like Christmas morning. It should take longer, you know? All this was possible by the support of Beach Talk Radio in raising $8,000 for the plants and the supplies, providing garden rakes and shovels that were donated to the Garden Club for future projects, plus 60 volunteers. Our thanks to Beach Talk Radio and Ed and Kim Ryan. While we were planting the garden, Beach Talk Radio was broadcasting their weekly show with the mayor. I did not hear the show live, as we were planting the garden, but I did listen to the show a couple of days later. So yes, Dan, the Garden Club was listening, and that's why I'm here today. We'd love to hear from the town on their upcoming thoughts of projects. We do feel we should set an example, as we are planting the gardens. We'd be happy to take the lead on these projects. Like, you give us the operants, and we'll run, to the point of making the order, getting the order delivered, meeting the order that's been delivered, that it matches "All Talk Faster." The... Please note that when you plant new vegetation, they require lots of water, even if they are native plants. I'd like to just let you know that the Royal Palms in Times Square are suffering, and they're really at a critical stage. You need to get them watered regularly, and with sufficient water for that, you know, that size plant. Yep. Okay, a couple initiatives that we brought up last August that are still on the table, as far as regre... Planting along Estero Boulevard, planting along the Beach Access, and setting an example that 75% native and 25% Florida-friendly is really the way to go. It'll be resilient and lovely to look at. So, you have my card? Please call me. Look forward to hearing from you. And in the meantime, Beach Talk Radio will come up with some way to keep us busy. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy.
Next up is Joseph Puglies, and after Mr. Puglies is Jack Kegelmeier.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Joe.
Hey, for 10 years, I lived next to...
Pull that market for us, would you please?
I lived next to Newton Park for 10 years, and for eight years, the town was a great neighbor. We had absolutely no issues. After Hurricane Ian, someone in town decided to turn it into a construction site. Let me tell you the tales that I've had since that's happened, okay? First off, they brought sand and parts of homes from all over the beach, put a sand sifting machine there, and sifted all the sand. Now, this wasn't just sand that was in there. There was lead paint from the homes. There was asbestos from the homes. That all went through the sand machine, ended up on the beach. I've picked up particles of glass, nails, and asbestos. And I know it was asbestos, because I used to work with it. My swimming pool had asbestos floating on top of it. This went on for months, okay? We dealt with it, because we understand there was a hurricane. After that was done, the town decided to demo the park, the rest of the building. Well, the guy on the excavator hit an underground power line, because there was no demo permit. The town didn't get one. So he hit the underground power line, went up through the cable, back into my house. Shocked the... It shocked the guy running the excavator. It's lucky he didn't die. Damaged the excavator dramatically. Caught the outside of my house on the fire. The fire department came, went inside my wiring, caused $10,000 worth of damage, caught my living room entertainment center on fire. Fortunately, my wife was home to put that fire out, okay? Those are the two of the things we've had so far living next to this park. The other thing is, I took samples of all that sand that was sifted. Lead and asbestos that went back onto the beach. I have no idea why anyone was permitted to do that. If you'd like to have the samples, there are them. Third, now we have another construction project going on. I've got a giant backhoe, next, literally next to my house, on top of a mound of sand. It's shaking my house all day long, okay? I have cracks in my foundation already. Literally, the house is shaking. I want to know how much longer this is going to continue. The money for that park was given by the state, and it was supposed to be used as a park. It's a year and a half now, and it's a construction site, and I don't see any end in future, because it's too convenient for you guys to use that and damage my property. I want to know who's going to pay for the engineer, the structural engineer, to evaluate my house and to make the necessary repairs that have been damaged by you guys letting him use that park? Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, Jack. Jack Kegelmeier. And that's all I have signed up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jack Kegelmeier. I live on my sailboat, sailing vessel, Frontera, and currently been in the mooring field since late February. And, I don't know, not too long ago, the boat came over to pump us out, and I asked them where Captain Gilchrist was, and they said he was no longer with the city. And was pretty shocked to hear about this, and I've heard some things around, and I'm not... I don't pretend to know the circumstances of the termination, and don't really, don't really need to, but what I wanted to do was come to the council today to express my support for Captain Gilchrist, and also to convey to the council the depth and the breadth of the support for the Captain Gilchrist amongst the sailing community, and let you guys know that, again, I don't know the circumstances, but I would suggest to you that if it wasn't something that required Captain Gilchrist to be terminated, I would highly encourage the council to reconsider this termination. Captain Gilchrist is one of the best harbor masters I've ever seen, and everybody that I've spoken to, from people that have been cruising for a year to people that have been cruising for 30 years, say the same thing. I even heard about Captain Gilchrist before I got here. Mentioned that my cruising plans were to come to the mooring field. They're like, "You're going to love Austin. He's great. He's really diligent. He takes care of business." And when I got here, that was borne out. He's highly organized. He knew everything that was going on in the field. He knew everybody that was there. He knew who belonged and who didn't, all about safety. Showed us how to pull our mooring lines up to make sure that we didn't swing in the current, and so he's very... He was extremely diligent, and just gets things done. Also, he personally greets every guest. This guy is an ambassador for your town. He is... Everybody I know that has ever met him has said that they feel welcomed here. They feel... They feel cared for here, because of his, not just his work, but his hospitality. Does he... Has he ruffled some feathers sometimes? I'm sure he probably has. But when you're out there dealing with the cruising community, sometimes you have to tell people how it is. Sometimes you have to do that. But, you know, I've heard about some of the... I mean, you know, all the work that he's done. I've seen him diving moorings every day, and so I really believe that the town is losing a real hidden gem. And I think it would be a loss for the city if this wasn't reconsidered. In fact, one of the things I'd like to present is, as soon as this action happened, a spontaneous petition went up outside the Harbor Masters office, and I... Is there a way to enter this into the record somehow? Okay. That's my talk, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, you guys are losing a hidden gem. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jack.
That's all I have signed up.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in public comment? Yes, sir. Come on up. Make sure you identify yourself for the record.
Sure.
Thanks.
Hi, good morning. Some of you may know me. I'm Mark Kincaid. I'm with Coastal Engineering Consultants. We've worked for the town before the town was the town. We've worked in the mooring field for... Since the mooring field, before the mooring field was a mooring field. I'd like to thank the gentleman that came up before to speak on Austin's behalf. I have known every harbor master that's worked for the town. I've known harbor masters in other locations for other mooring fields. And Austin is a stand-up guy, and I just wanted to come up and say that you're losing a valuable person for the town. The town is made up of the people that are here, and it's hard for me to believe that he isn't here anymore. That's all I wanted to say, just speak up for Austin.
Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Mary Ambrosio with Sun Palace Vacations. I'm reading this from my owners, and Paula Keiger, who couldn't be here yet. So, "We are writing respectfully to request that the town approve retention of our weekly short-term rental status, as my wife Leslie and I work to restore our property, which has been badly damaged by Hurricane Ian. We appreciate the opportunity to submit this statement for our realtor, Paula Keiger, and us, because we are unable to attend the hearing at this issue. We thank you for your consideration. As a background, Leslie and I have owned our home at 21501 Madera Road since 2013. Our home had a weekly STR status when we purchased it, and we have maintained this status continuously to the present. The STR status was an important consideration in our original purchase of our home, and remains so since we are not yet retired, and are unable to use our home full-time. Throughout this entire time, our home has been professionally managed by Sun Palace Vacations of Fort Myers Beach. Like so many others in this town, our home was badly damaged by Hurricane Ian, and we are diligently working toward determining the best course of action to restore our property. It has taken a great deal of time to find and meet with contractors, and to understand our options and the appreciated costs. After 18 months, we are finally nearing completion of the architectural plans to build a new home on our lot, which we have determined is necessary, given the extent of the damage to our home and need to comply with the 50% rule. Key to our ability to afford a new home is retention of our weekly rental status, the income from which will help us offset a portion of the expenses of owning this home. Their weekly rental status will expire on June 1st, 2024. Given its current condition, our home will not be available to rent by June 1st, thus necessitating our request for retention of our weekly STR status for June 1st, 2024 to May 31st, 2025. If we are unable to get the agreement with the contractors soon, we may still need a few more months beyond May 31st, 2025, because of the time required to obtain permitting and to rebuild. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Isabel Wells. I've been a resident for 35 years on Fort Myers Beach, and I'm a real estate broker, but also I run a rescue that a lot of people know about for the past 13 years. I'm in the newspaper all the time. I do have, you know, dogs that come in, and I understand that there's a lot of... It's more on the planning that I'm looking at right now. I would love to have actually a dog park on Fort Myers Beach. You're going to have a lot of new construction, a lot of hotels who are going to take pets. You're going to have a lot of residents. We all say that, you know, dogs and cats are family, and you have kids. You know, it's a family island, and for me, it would be great to have a place. And since we're on the stage of planning, it would be great just to allow everybody to have one place where they can take their dogs, not especially on the beach. We're not talking about... Dog Beach is different, completely different. I don't feel safe over there, but it would be nice to have a place here on Fort Myers Beach and say to people, "You can bring your pets here." And even for the resident, you have to see it as a positive, and especially with all the things that we've been through. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close that. Next is local achievements and recognitions with all the staff. Andy, maybe we'll have you go first. I see them standing back there. They've probably got other things they could be doing.
Yeah, they'd probably rather be seated as well. It's kind of interesting that we bring them in. There's just a few of them. We have approximately 70, give or take. This is a small sampling of those employees, and they've been recognized by the chamber, and has the outstanding service, got a 2023 Outstanding Service Award. And I want to ask Ms. Jackie Lezak, the president of the, and CEO of the Fort Myers Beach Chamber, just to come up and just talk a little bit about it, and if I could get those employees to make their way kind of closer. I would appreciate it. Yeah, you knew this was going to happen.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, good morning. For the record, Jackie Lezak, President, CEO of the Fort Myers Beach Chamber of Commerce. Every year, the Chamber's Board of Directors issues awards in a number of different categories to individuals and community members and organizations on and around the island for great service to our island and our community. This year, or last year, we were not able to have our annual meeting and our awards presentation, so this year, we will be doing 2022 and 2023 award presentation. When the Board of Directors sat around and started talking about the awards that they wanted to issue out for the last two years, there was a lot of conversation, obviously, a lot of names. But it was very interesting. When we looked at each of the different awards we give out, it came... People kept coming up with the same names for the same award. And for this particular award, it is the 2023 Outstanding Service Award. And the Outstanding Service Award honors an individual or organization who has contributed significantly to society's health and welfare. The employees of the town of Fort Myers Beach, despite personal losses and the loss of their facilities and equipment, continued to work tirelessly throughout 2023 to restore our community. Their contribution to the restoration of the town's infrastructure and the improvements made to the town's facilities will impact our island community for generations to come. And the board really felt that for their continued dedication, service, and support of our community, the Chamber Board of Directors wishes to honor you with the Chamber's 2023 Outstanding Service Award. And it really is our pleasure to issue each one of you, all the way around the road. And to all the ones who could not make it this morning, this award... You guys work tirelessly, in and out, every day, and we don't know each and every one of you personally, but those of us who live on the island, the people who come to visit this island, the people who live somewhere else but call this island their home for a day, a week, a month, out of the year, everything you guys do impacts all of us, and we truly, truly appreciate it, especially despite that I know a lot of you lost your homes and your belongings and your things, yet you continue to come under the most dire of conditions in the days and weeks that followed the storm. So for this, thank you very, very much to each and every one of you. We're so proud of you, and we're so pleased to have you serving us, our community, and our guests, and our town. Thank you.
If I may, Mayor, I've been here 11 months, today, actually. And this is, and it's not an April Fool's joke. This is... Maybe it is. Depends on who you're talking to. But this group of people is what keeps me coming back every day, every day, every day, because not one person can do this. It takes us collectively doing it, along with you and the support we get from the council. So I think you're part of this as well, in my eyes, because it's you who started this, with me being here, and then these fine ladies and gentlemen just do an excellent job for us, and they continue to do that and come back. And I echo what Jackie said. They had issues as well, but they put their issues in the back and came to make sure the town kept rising, and they will continue, and they really do mean a lot to me. And I can't express it enough. And just keeping them here and keeping them doing what they're doing is a big deal. And we are... We're changing, too. They've already been in like their third home in 11 months, or in 18 months, and as we'll talk about in a little bit, there'll be another one. So there's just a lot of changes they go through, and change is not always easy, but they've adapted, and I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Excellent work. Well deserved. All right, we'll start with you, Councilor King.
Of course.
Sorry, I didn't see you were halfway.
That's all right. Just wanted to donate, that's all.
Yeah.
I'll piggyback on what Kathy Turner talked about. Thanks to Beach Talk Radio, their Yellow Army, those that donated, also the Estero Island Garden Club, and those that were there to help with the plantings behind the Wavy Wall in Times Square. From the pictures I've seen, it looks fantastic, and thank you very much. Also, I want to congratulate the friends of the Mount House for a successful Artful Intersection 4.0 fundraiser. I wasn't able to attend, but I want them to know that I did receive my email about re-upping my membership, and I did so yesterday. So that's it.
All right. Vice Mayor Adahol?
Well, that's two of the three I had on my list, John, so I did what you said. I would include the FMB Community Foundation in Keighley County Beautiful, who had a cleanup on Saturday, had roughly 150 volunteers across the island picking up trash. Great organizations. This is a tradition that they've established, and it's great to see people on the island and off the island who come in. A lot of companies come in and do a corporate volunteer effort as well. So just thanks to everybody involved in that effort. That's all I've got.
Councilor Woodson?
So that makes three that I was going to cover as well. But I do also just want to thank our town employees. They have done just beyond, above and beyond for the last 18 months, everything they've done. I know I call all the time on different things, and they are always there to help. They just continue to shine, and I really appreciate the chamber for acknowledging that. They have done a lot of great work, and I know they'll continue to do that.
Councilor Safford?
I want to echo the same sentiments of Councilor King. I think Ellen Vaughn and the friends of Mount House did an incredible job, despite the weather. It was a fantastic event. So, kudos to Ellen. Thank you so much.
That it?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I won't restate everything that's already been stated, but I think just a general shout-out to all of our nonprofits on the island. It completely amazes me how they keep able... Being able to have events, and the donors that go along with it, that donate their time and their money over and over and over, and earn full support of this community. It's really empowering, and big thanks to all of them.
Advisory Committee items and reports. Sam from Anchorage Advisory, can you hear? There he is.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Sam Lurie, for the record. I'm the chairman of the Anchorage Advisory Committee, and I just want to introduce myself and give a brief update of the Anchorage Advisory Committee. But first off, I'd like to thank Mark Kincaid for coming today. He had a very few words, but this person is the expert at keeping our field safe, and I hope you take note of what he said this morning. The mooring field is practically to capacity. We have 77 of the 89 mooring balls functioning, and they're working on the other balls. So next time you drive over the bridge, take a good look. It looks beautiful. It's really thriving out there. The dinghy dock seems to be functioning well, but the up- but the upland services are in need of an upgrade. Since Austin has left, it seems like the office is running well. Patty's been keeping the daily hours. And I understand Patrick and the staff are operating the pump boat and all the other duties and are able to keep up with most of what's going on out there. About five years ago, we went through a similar process to situate the mooring field upland services and location. Council decided on Harbor House for the office and Metansus for the support facilities. That's no longer an option, but there are numerous opportunities and there seems like there's more every meeting we have for setting up our services amenities, upland facilities to fit with the town and provide what we are looking for is the committee and the town is a premier mooring field. We were getting very close before the storm to, we get good reviews on from practically every patron that goes out there. And it's it's an excellent field. In our last meeting, staff brought forward some great ideas and location. One of the complex parts of the whole situation is the mix of the services and the different locations. We will need three boat lifts for the town boats, one pump out boat, two auxiliary boats. We need an upland administrative office with daily hours, upland restroom, showers and laundries. In our last location, we had Wi-Fi and we had some supplies. The more we could consolidate the services, the better, but there may be better locations for other things, but it may not be practical to do one central location. However, we would like you to consider the proximity, the dinghy dockage, trolleys for people to get to groceries and other transportation, and some kind of proximity to the entertainment district. Regardless of where we locate the facilities, we probably will still maintain the dinghy dock under the bridge and that is central to all of these things. Looking forward to working with the town and the committee. I'm new to the chairmanship. However, I have been on the committee for over eight years. And when I started, Booba was the harbor master. He shortly after I started retired. Booba's a character. And Austin came on. And I'm not going to comment on your actions, but I would like to comment on Austin in general. When I came on, when he came on board, he knew very little about anything. However, he's a real leader. He took on anything that came over his desk or onto his plate. He didn't assign it to people. He learned how to do it. He became an expert in diving, repairs, running the pump out boat, captaining, you name it. The Swiss Army knife of the mooring field. So I just wanted to make a comment that after Ian, he did all that. That's before the storm. After Ian, he was everywhere, doing everything. I saw him a lot. First, the cleanup and then the rebuild. And the rebuild was huge. Mark Kincaid and his company assisted. We have a foolproof mooring systems. They've been refined every every year. They get better and better. And it's looking good out there. So I just wanted to say that Austin's true leader. He evolved at the job. He's going to be sorely missed by myself, the entire Anchorage Committee, and most importantly, the patrons. They always had a good word to say about him. So we're looking forward to getting our upland services going with you and hopefully we've got a lot of lot of options going on. And I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Adheral for coming to our meetings. He's a excellent liaison and we appreciate everything you do.
All right. Don't run off yet, Sam. First, thank you for your commitment and service to that committee. I know you've been there a while.
Yeah.
Sam, if I could, appreciate your comments this morning. I just wanted to give you an update because one of the things we talked about at our last meeting was exploring Bowditch Park to house the boats, the pumping station, and possibly some upland facilities down the road. So at the request of the advisory committee, this is the only chance I have a chance to inform my colleagues. So this is a good setup, Sam. So I contacted Commissioner Sandelli and he was very interested in helping us and facilitating a dialogue. So I think he's he's forwarded all this information. I went over the weekend after our meeting and I took some pictures of the of the docks that are that were right next to Bowditch that are county docks to see if we could partner with the county. And I think he's taken all that information. I sent him, I took pictures. He sent that to Dave Horner from the county, who's the chief executive there. And I think Andy and Frankie now are aware of this. So hopefully we'll begin to have some conversations with the county to see, apparently they've been somewhat reticent in the past, but post Ian is kind of a whole new world. So hopefully we can figure out a way to partner with them to house those boats, a pump out station, and maybe someday the upland facilities as well because those restrooms at Bowditch have to be repaired. They've got showers there. There's a great, there's a lot of opportunity there if everybody just kind of figures out a way to partner together. So we haven't had a chance to talk, so I thought I'd share that with my colleagues and you. So hopefully that dialogue will begin between the town and the county to hopefully find a nice partnership there at Bowditch. I think at our last meeting, I think it was Austin who suggested that would be the ideal location for those boats and the pump out station. So hopefully we'll make some progress. It'll take some time, but that's the latest on that. But thank you, Sam.
Yes, and thanks for checking into that. That was one of our better options. And every time we look around, there's something different. Moss Marine, there's a brand new Marina going in and there may be something in a little corner there somewhere for us that would be beneficial for everybody. Possible interlocal agreement with the county on Bowditch Point. So we have a blank slate. So this is a great opportunity. You guys are doing everything, you know, we got to start over with everything, but this is a great opportunity to do some real big improvements. And the field has grown, so now it's time for our services to grow into it.
Well, Sam, before you run off, before the storm, I did have a conversation with the Moss Marine area and they didn't know anything about what they were potentially doing, but specifically about this and using there. And they weren't opposed to it. However, their caveat was that they would want to be in control of it, not the town, meaning they would set the prices. They would, so they weren't opposed to it. So I don't know if that's something you want to talk about with the committee, if that's, and the staff to see if that's something that they're willing to do. But they didn't sound opposed to it. There was just some things that they would want to do different if they were to take that on. So it's not out of the question. It's just a matter of what is feasible, what isn't. So if that's something you want to bring up and talk at your committee about and maybe reach out to them and see what it would take to bring some suggestions to the staff and to the council, that would be.
There's so many different, we've been hopscotching around all of them, but we have tried to narrow down some positives and negatives to them. And we will probably try to submit some kind of formal, last time when we picked the Harbor House, there was no perfect solution. You know, we want a bayside, you know, there were so many different things. But if we could give you all the information, the pros and cons, that'll hopefully help you out.
Any other questions for Sam?
Thanks, sir. Thanks.
Next, we have the approval of the minutes from the town council meeting of March 18, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor King.
Second.
Second by Counselor Woodson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Now we have to go through all of our poll consent agenda. The first one, item A, is a special event extension of the farmer's market at Moss Marine. We had to pull that because that is actually, they're asking for all the markets through May, not just the one at Moss Marine, correct?
Do you want to do C and D first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I forgot. I thought they were all polled.
No.
All right. So is there a motion to approve the two that didn't get pulled? Item C, Resolution 24-60 through 24-64, extending state of local emergency for Hurricane Ian, and Resolution 24-65 through 24-69, extending the state of local emergency for Hurricane Adalia.
So moved.
Got a motion by Counselor Safford.
Second.
Second by Counselor Woodson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go back to A. Thank you, Amy. As I said, it's to extend all the farmer's markets through May. Is there any discussion? I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda, item A, to extend all the markets through May.
Second.
And then motion by Mayor Adler, seconded by Vice Mayor Adheral. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Next was pulled by John Sol, item B, sole source monitoring relocation of marine turtle nests. John?
I just wanted further public explanation for what this is and what the town obligation is.
Chad, come on up. I see you're wearing the proper color again today. Very nice.
For Easter and for LSU.
Yes, sir.
Go Hawks.
Yes, sir.
TCU.
So our, if you if you read through the warehouse clauses in the resolution, you'll see the obligations the town has to meet our permit conditions for the renourishment of the beach. Those include marine turtle monitoring and nest relocations as needed to build the beach back.
And the cost for the town is?
$40,000.
I thought it was broken down differently when I looked at. I thought it was like almost $10,000 for the town and the remaining.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. You're right. So if I can get into the details of the financial impact, that $40,000 is covered by the interlocal agreement, which the state will be picking up 43, 44%, somewhere there about. And the same with FDP and the town's obligation will be 15.1% or approximately $6,000 of that $40,000.
Okay.
Apologies for that.
It's all right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, John?
None for me.
Is there a motion to approve item B, sole source monitoring and relocation of the marine turtle nests?
I'll move it.
Got a motion by Counselor King.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Woodson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. Next, we have item E, Resolution 24-59, utility billing software. John?
Well, I wanted further public discussion on that as well. And I see, I understand this morning there was a typo in the.
Yes, the correct dollar amount is not $436,850. It is $43,685. Otherwise, all of us would be going into the software business today.
Morning.
Morning, Mark.
How's everybody doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. So the current billing program that we have is old and antiquated. It's basically MS-DOS based. It's not even cloud based or anything. So we're back in the Stone Age, if you understand. So many of the reports that we require, this program just doesn't do. It doesn't speak nice to our metering program where we go out and read the meters. They don't communicate well together. Reports that we tried to develop for Lee County, they don't report together nicely. Joe probably has more input into that on the financial side. I'm more of on the physical side of it. Our meter program doesn't communicate well with this. The program that we want to go to, KUSI, is a, let me read what it says. It's a connected utility partner meeting reading program. It's one of the only one in the country that partners with Neptune, which is our meters, so that they all communicate together. It's actually recognized by KUSI. They work together with Neptune so that they all read together, so that we can get the reports that we need and the histories that we need and things. Like I said, Joe has probably a lot more information on the financial side of it. But as far as the mechanical side, the programs are going to meld really nicely together. So I'll let you talk about the financial.
Okay. Well, as the finance director in the finance department, we have an interest, of course, on how the billing side is handled and interfaces with our accounting software. And the existing system really doesn't interface at all. So we have to input all that information manually. So with this new software, it would generate, automatically generate the journal entry import that we can just simply import into the system. So that would make that easier.
Joe, when you say you have to manually enter, is that like everyone's water bill you got to manually enter?
No, no. For on the financial side, the accounting side, we just enter the total. So it's like the total revenue, the total accounts receivable. So all the detail is kept in the in the utility billing software that we currently are using. And so, and that is very difficult for us to kind of get in there and look if we need to investigate or research something like why something changed. It's very difficult to do that with the existing software. Some other things we run into is that some of it is like frozen in time. And so the current software company is actually doing the billing for the town. They generate the billing. They create all the billing reports and they store them somewhere for us. But if somewhere, somehow a report is missed, you can't go back and reproduce it. And so we have like missing pieces of data, you know, over the years that makes it very difficult to audit, very difficult to figure out what's happening. So with the new software, we can rerun any reports at any time for auditing purposes. We'll be able to drill down in and figure things out if we need to. So it would just be much easier to use.
This is just a personal question because it drives me nuts. Every month I pay the water bill. Will this get rid of our fee that we have to pay on top of the water fee to pay it online? I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
No, we got to pay for this.
Yeah, I know.
No.
Yeah. Any questions for Mark or Joe?
Just real quick, Mark, are there any outward facing benefits that the consumer will see?
The consumer will see it if they have a question with their bill. So if they have a problem with their bill, we'll be able to give them more accurate information on a quicker timeline. Rather than trying to go through our present one, it may take two or three weeks. This should be, you know, I'll get back with you in an hour.
Very good.
And tell you what's happening.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Joe. I'll move Resolution 24-59, utility billing software.
We've got a motion by Counselor King. I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Next is Resolution 24-15. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I have Chad come up and I'd like to, just in the interest of time, just have him address F, G, H, and I collectively in terms of your explanation, Chad. And if you could, I see, is Joe still here? Yeah, Joe's still. You could maybe touch a little bit on some of the challenges we're having at Newton Park. Plus, I understand you also have some good news about the north end of the island as well. So if you could just give everybody just a collective update as to what these four items entail and then touch on those other two issues, that'd be great. And if you need any support from Mr. Poff, that'd be fine, too.
Ace up the sleeve, Mr. Poff. Let's see. If it pleases the Vice Mayor, you want me to go through just each item separately?
Or collectively, if you just want to give a summary of what we're what we're trying to accomplish here.
Sure, sure. So first off, we have the interlocal agreement. I just wanted to highlight a few points of that interlocal agreement that staff was very persistent on with the county as well as with the state. The first is in section, section six, C2, calling to the, calling the county will advance the sum to the town equal of 90% of the county share estimated for the big bid documents and sand placement, the county will make payment to the town within 30 days of receiving the notice of the approved bid and executed contract. So we are getting money upfront. We were persistent in that and I think that's a big benefit to the town for our cash flow. The second is in the same section, and then D3, the cost remaining after the deduction of the state share shall be known as the local share, which the county and the town are responsible for. And the town will seek grant funding to reduce the overall local share for the town and the county. Any such funding will apply to the town share first, which is key. So if we get a grant from FDM or some other agency and we want to use that, our shares is coming first rather than it coming off the collective local share, which would be Lee County and the town. Lastly, this is something that's probably about four years old, but staff working hard with the state to ensure that the southern segment, also known as the CWA, is 100% paid for by the by the state and is not part of the local share. So all those represent, you know, seven figures, maybe plus. Michael will know the numbers a little bit better, of millions of dollars in savings to the town. So that's the ILA. So we have category G, speaking to the vice mayor's reference to North Estero. It's something that's been the staff and along with our partners at Coastal Engineering Consultants, working to get a berm installed on North Estero. The beach is very low lying there. Elevation's very low. It is susceptible to overwash and even. working to get a berm installed on North Estero. The beach is very low lying there, elevation's very low. It is susceptible to overwash and even relatively, I don't want to say minor storms, but tropical storm events, nor'easters. They've had at least two, maybe three overwashes since Hurricane Ian. So they're in desperate need of some fortification along the beach to prevent, at least stop what we can with storm impacts to their, to the upland structures. So this Category G, both the STA for Coastal Engineering Consultants, support with that project as well as the change order to EarthTech Enterprises to construct the project, taking advantage of their very kind bid and getting Sand Truck to construct a berm along North Estero from Crescent Park to Bowditch Park.
That's a big win.
Yep, huge. Yes, sir. Lastly, so we have construction phase services for the big re-nourishment project. That is the dredge project. Coastal Engineering has done a great job in permitting as many options as possible for the contractors to take advantage of, to allow them flexibility in constructing the beach and giving us the most competitive prices that they can. Also working with Lee County and regionalizing the project so that contractors can be in southwest Florida for some time, working to rebuild our beaches after Hurricane Ian. And I'm not sure if y'all have any questions for Michael Poff. He is a wealth of knowledge.
I do.
Yes.
Thanks, Chad. Did you cover the last one, Chad, the final one?
Yeah, so that's, that's the EarthTech change order that they're going to be, we're, we're taking, again, taking advantage of that great bid that they gave us and adding on to that to construct that northern berm. That one million, one point one, or nearly one point two million dollars is paid for in full by the FDP contract that's noted in the agenda.
Perfect.
Mike, if you could take a minute and kind of try to address some of the concerns we've heard from neighbors around Newton Park. A, how long is that going to continue to go on in terms of trucked-in sand? And then when do we begin to shift for the dredging where it's, where it's dredged from the Gulf of Mexico and then pumped onto the island? What's, I know these are moving number dates, but what's the rough timeline for both of those? And will it be a transition from trucked-in sand to dredging? Or will they both be going on at the same time? Or how do you see it playing out?
Sure. Good morning. For the record, Michael Poff, Coastal Engineering Consultants. The goal for the Truck Hall project is to be done around June first. Newton Park may or may not be used that entire time. We're trying to open up additional accesses. We're trying to minimize how much time we spend at each access. Chad and the attorney are working on an agreement with a private property owner for the north side that would allow the, the north segment to be built and use that access instead. The county has allowed us to use Bowditch Point Park in the bid documents for the dredge contractor. Newton Park is another location. And then on the south end, Wyndham property has allowed the use of their property as well. So we're trying to split up how much time is spent at each of the accesses. The dredge bid is on the street right now. Contractors have sent in their questions. We'll be responding to them this week. And then bids are open on April fifteenth. So God willing, with a favorable bid, we'll be back before you for approval of that contract with the dredge contractor. Goal is to have all of our submittals and pre-construction meeting in May, that they could begin work in June. So transition from the Truck Hall project to the dredge project hopefully will be seamless around that timeframe. The Truck Hall, the last items that they will be doing are filling some of the public accesses and restoring those as they've been doing. The folks will be getting the north end berm done, and we'll move back and finish any of the public accesses. So it's possible the Truck Hall might, might continue into June a little bit, but that would be isolated to those public access points.
So the goal is to be done with the trucked-in sand by June one. And then the dredge, dredging project, which brings sand from outside, or off the island, from the Gulf of Mexico onto the island, pumped on. That would begin sometime in June in a perfect world.
That is correct, sir.
Any other advice for the folks at Newton Park in terms of de-escalating some of the impact to the neighbors as they try to bring that sand on? Is there things that the contractor can do to improve life for the neighbors there?
We're meeting with the contractor tomorrow to talk about those specifically. So EarthTech is aware of, of the items that have been brought before. There have been emails and some discussion points, and we're meeting with them tomorrow to discuss whether best management practices could be used to try to reduce some of the issues at Newton Park.
I don't know if Sam is still here, but one of the things I hear, too, is the, is the speed of these trucks, not only on the beach, but also going down Estero Boulevard. I know these are, some of these drivers are independent contractors, but any way to send a message to the, we, we love the re-nourishment, don't get me wrong. But, but, but just that these trucks just be a little bit more cognizant of, of the speed limits and the, and just a little bit more patient on the beach.
Yeah, call Lee County Sheriff's Office, and that's probably the best way to get them to.
But we can't send a message to the contractor?
We have absolutely every time from the, the impetus of the project. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And just to, I just wanted to follow up with trying to mitigate the issues at Newton Park. We've also informed Mr. Joe that we are going to create some passive recreation and vegetative buffer on that south side of Newton Park to try and bring back the educational element and access back on that side. And that vegetative buffer should give him a bit relief. And when I talked to him on the phone, he was happy with that. And we'll, again, continue to work with, to try and mitigate the, the issues that have been reported there.
And Mike, just off the top of your head, just very, in very general terms, once the dredging begins and we start pumping in the sand, which is what, eighty percent of the projects? Seventy percent? It's a huge amount we're going to, we're going to pump on from the Gulf of Mexico, correct?
Correct.
And once, if that begins in June roughly, how long will it take to complete that portion of the project?
Goal will be to finish by November first.
Very good. Thank you.
And just real quick, since we're on it, someone asked me, and I don't know the numbers, maybe you get, what was the final number as far as the berm? How many people signed on to get the berm and how many didn't? Rough number, rough.
I know that's on my to-do list to go and count that. I have not gotten that. Now we'll get it to you.
But it's more than what originally, before daily, I would say, right?
Yeah, we're, we, I mean, we just added, you know, Pelican Watch Across the Street signed up not too long ago. That was one of the big ones. So it's, I will get it to you. The, the central section still remains the challenge with the single-family homes. But I will have those numbers to you, Mayor.
Yeah, no worries. Thanks. Any other questions for these two? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Madam Town Attorney, Parliamentary Inquiry, can I group all four of these at once? Or do we have to do them individually?
No, we should have separate votes on each one.
Very good.
Okay. Then, item F, Resolution twenty-four dash fifteen, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Mayor. I will second. I'll second that one. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. Next is item G, Resolution twenty-four dash seventy-one, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Adheral.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Woodson. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. Item H, Resolution twenty-four dash seven zero, is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash seven zero?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Safford.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Woodson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. And lastly, item I, Resolution twenty-four dash seven two, is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Woodson, seconded by Counselor Safford. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Mike, just real quick, I, I don't think, I, I don't think I either asked the question correctly or just got, got an answer. If, if people look at the, the broad picture of sand for Fort Myers Beach, I think it's a forty million dollar infusion of sand, correct, roughly?
Forty-three million dollars. It's one point two, three million yards of sand. And the dredging will be about nine hundred and thirty thousand of that one point two, three million. The rest has been brought in by Truck Hall.
So dredging is roughly eighty percent of the sand? So if people think we've got a lot of.
I used to do that math in my head, so.
No, just ballpark. But I guess what I'm trying to convey to our, to our residents is if, if people think the trucked-in sand was a significant portion of sand, they've got another thing coming when they see the dredged-in sand.
Seventy-six percent would be the dredging.
So that's going to be a huge infusion of sand for Fort Myers Beach?
Yes, sir.
And how will that play out? Where will that start and where will that finish?
So we're going to do the north central sections first. And they have two pipeline corridors to come in to the beach, depending on which contractor wins the bid. And they can go to the north, they can go to the south. But basically, from Bowditch Point Park, the south boundary to Lenark Avenue, will be built June, July, August, hopefully finishing early September. Then they will pick up that pipeline and move it. Or they may continue to pump sand to the beach and then move that sand mechanically to the south segment. There are challenges with the south segment in terms of the, the long distance to get the sand there. And because of the current constraints of the erodic conditions, there's no dry beach along certain segments. So the contractor has multiple methods to get the sand to the south segment. That'll begin after shorebird season's completed along the critical wildlife area. And that will begin sometime in September, hopefully be done by November first.
And I hate to ask you this, Mike, put you on the spot, but, but you've been so clever and inventive in terms of helping us aggregate all, all these funds and all these various projects and all these various permit requests, very complex project. Is there any possibility for the dredging of Laguna Shores? For that sand to be used as part of the re-nourishment program? Or is that, is that not germane to what we're trying to accomplish?
I won't say it can't be used, but that the dredger that's coming, the equipment that they have, would overwhelm trying to get into Laguna Shores. It'd be a whole separate operation. I believe there's been sediment testing done to analyze it for use on the beach, but I'll, I'll defer to Chad. I'm not the engineer for that one, so.
Okay. Just, we're trying to kill a lot of birds with one stone, if we could.
We do not kill any birds with any stones, sir.
Well played.
There'll be no turn left. Never mind. No. Do not chase the birds away. They're laying on eggs now, so please don't chase the birds away.
All right. Got you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. We're now into our public hearing. Our first is Ordinance twenty-four dash zero three, Flood. It's the second reading and final public hearing of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, amending Article four of Chapter six of the Land Development Code of the Town of Fort Myers Beach to require all manufactured homes installed or replaced in special flood hazard areas to be elevated at or above at least the base flood elevation plus one foot. Adopt the November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two flood insurance study for Lee County, Florida and incorporated areas. Three, change the substantial improvement and substantial damage determinations. And four, amend the definitions of market value and substantial damage in order to comply with recent changes to the community rating system necessary to retain a Class Eight, which assists the town in maintaining its Class Five Community Rating Systems designation, providing for codification, severability, scriven errors, conflicts of law, and an effective date. Kristen?
Good morning, Kristen Schimacher, Town of Fort Myers Beach. As you recall, first reading was March eighteenth, where council approved, had a five to zero vote to move it forward to second reading. I'm just here for any questions. In the meantime, nobody's reached out with any concerns or comments about moving this forward for the second reading.
The only question I have for you, Kristen, is with the whole thing we just had to go through with FEMA over the weekend, does that have any impact on any of this as far as the rating is concerned?
We still need to move all this forward as we're sorting out everything with FEMA and the state.
Okay. Questions for Kristen? Seeing none. All right. Open a public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak on Ordinance twenty-four dash zero three? Seeing none. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion or a motion.
I'll move Ordinance twenty-four dash zero three, Flood.
Motion by Counselor King. I will second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Counselor King.
Aye.
Mayor Allers, aye. Vice Mayor?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Counselor Safford?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next is Ordinance twenty-four dash zero seven, TECO Franchise Agreement. This is the second reading and final public hearing of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, granting to Peoples Gas System, Inc., its successors, and assigns a non-exclusive natural gas franchise agreement to use the public rights of way of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, and prescribing the terms and conditions under which said franchise may be exercised, providing for findings, severability, and providing an effective date. Come on up.
Morning, counselors. My name is Carlo Fassi, C-A-R-L-O-F-A-S-S-I. I'm the External Affairs Manager for TECO Peoples Gas in southwest Florida. Wanted to start again by thanking your city manager, your finance director, your contract specialist, and your city attorney for working with us on this agreement. As I mentioned two weeks ago, this has been expired for a bit, and we wanted to get another one on the books. Wanted to remind everyone, we are a regulated utility company in the state of Florida that falls in the purview of the Florida Public Service Commission and the federally by the Pipeline and Hazard Safety Materials Administration. I know we talked briefly about safety. Wanted to say again that we conduct regular inspections of our meters as well as our system of pipelines from Pensacola all the way down to Miami, which includes Fort Myers Beach. I know there was a question, Counselor King, about where our pipeline is currently located and where our customers are located. I can't get into too much detail, but as I mentioned two weeks ago, our pipeline runs from the northwest side of the island, runs southeast. I can say that it runs as far south as Denora Boulevard or Vorace Street. And we have anywhere between a hundred and, a hundred to a hundred and fifty meters located on the island, which is per customer. Some of them have been inactive since Hurricane Ian, but our hope is to get them active as soon as possible. I also know Counselor, Vice Mayor Adheral, you had mentioned raising the aggregate cap on damages to ten million. We are still comfortable with that modification to the agreement today. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Any other questions? And Nancy, you made the adjustment to the agreement?
We changed the, the insurance. We increased it.
Okay.
Consistent.
Oh, I don't remember that amendment being made in.
It's in the language.
Oh, it's in the language. Okay, perfect. All right.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We'll open up for public comment. Is there anyone would like to speak on Ordinance twenty-four dash zero seven, TECO Finance Agreement?
Franchise.
Franchise agreement. I don't have my glasses on. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion or motion.
I'll move Ordinance twenty-four dash zero seven, TECO Franchise Agreement.
Second.
Motion by Counselor King, seconded by Vice Mayor Adheral. Any further discussion? Counselor King?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adheral?
Aye.
Mayor Allers, aye. Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Counselor Safford?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. The next five hearings, the next five items on our agenda are public hearings for review of various land use requests. For the benefit of the public, please be aware that these are, items are quasi-judicial in nature. Our attorney will further explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Zoning revisions, special exceptions and variances, these are all quasi-judicial in nature. And this requires that our public hearings comply with procedural requirements that have been established in Florida law and in our Land Development Code. So quasi-judicial proceedings, these are less formal than proceedings before a circuit court, but they are more formal than the remainder of our meeting. And they follow the basic standards of due process that requires certain notices, application of the correct standards, and decisions that are made on competent and substantial evidence presented to the town council, either in written documents or through oral testimony. So once evidence is received, the town council will evaluate the testimony and information for each item and then draw a conclusion regarding whether the criteria in the Land Development Code or state law, as may be applicable, has been satisfied. So pure speculation and mere opinion that is not based on competent facts is not legally considered or cannot be by the town council in evaluating an agenda item or criteria. Testimony by professionals who are qualified as experts in a particular area has been considered competent evidence by Florida courts, as well as testimony by neighbors and residents who have fact-based information such as minutes, surveys, engineering reports, or testimony that is made based on their personal information and knowledge. So if you intend to speak during, to any of these agenda items, please keep this in mind. When you come forward, if you could please state your name clearly for the record, whether or not you've been sworn in and your qualifications or your interest in the matter. So for purposes of efficiency, before beginning these five public hearings, we're going to go ahead and dispose of a few items. For the record, I need to ask the town clerk, have all agenda items been properly noticed pursuant to our Land Development Code? pursuant to our Land Development Code?
Yes, they have.
And at this time, I need to ask the town council, does any member have a conflict of interest that would prohibit them from voting on any of these items? Any conflicts?
But, Councillor King?
None.
Vice Mayor Adherold?
None.
Mayor Allers, I do not have any. Councillor Woodson?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay.
So there are no conflicts, therefore, clearly we have a quorum that is present and eligible to vote. At this time, I'll ask the clerk if she would swear in anyone who is interested in providing testimony to any of the agenda items.
If you'll all raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, all parties have been sworn.
This is the second reading and final public hearing of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordnance of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving, approving with conditions or denying the commercial plan development CPD zoning for the property located at 3051 Astero Boulevard, generally identified as strap numbers 29-46-24-W1-0120C.0100 Fort Myers Beach, providing for other clarifications as necessary, providing for conflicts of law, scrivener's errors, severability, and providing for an effective date. If any town council member has had any ex parte communication to disclose, please let us know the subject disclosed and the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, any correspondence that you received, or any observations made in the site." Councillor King?
None that I recall.
Vice Mayor Adherold?
None.
I have had none. Councillor Woodson?
None.
Councillor Safrid?
None.
All right. Sarah Prost has been qualified as an expert already by the town council, and based on her education and experience, has been accepted as an expert in the field of land use, planning and development in the town of Fort Myers Beach. Are there any other individuals who would like to be qualified as an expert witness on behalf of the applicant at this time? That you've all already been, yeah. Has a property owner and applicant seen a copy of the agenda item, backup materials from staff? They're nodding their head, yes. Go ahead, Sarah.
Good morning, Sarah Prost with Community Development. The neighborhood company, on behalf of the Southland Corporation, the property owner for 3051 Astero Boulevard, has applied for a commercial plan development rezoning to redevelop the property on the corner of Voorhees and Astero Boulevard with a convenience store. The commercial boulevard-zoned property was the site of a 7-Eleven store and a gym prior to Hurricane Ian. A convenience store was previously on the site, but the commercial boulevard zoning district does not allow the convenience store or gas pump use. In order to rebuild the convenience store with gas pumps, a commercial plan development is necessary. The CPD also includes several deviation requests from the Land Development Code for the site. A deviation from the vehicle access separation requirements in Section 10-285, the code requires a minimum separation distance on Astero of 250 feet, and on the local streets requires a separation distance of 125 feet. On both Voorhees and on Astero Boulevard, the access entrances will be closer than those. A deviation from LDC Section 10-416D3, Table 10-9, to decrease the minimum type-C buffer width requirement of 15 feet for a type-C buffer, the deviation would allow a minimum width of three feet for the portion of the required buffer along the northeastern boundary along the proposed dumpster location. A deviation from Section 34704A, which requires build-two lines for Astero Boulevard to be established at five to 10 feet from the property line, the deviation would allow for a build-two line of five to 90 feet for Astero Boulevard. The proposed building will be located 89.9 feet from Astero Boulevard, and the canopy for the pumps will be closer to Astero than the building. The proposed development requires a deviation from Section 34706D to allow access from Astero Boulevard and Voorhees. The code requires that if a site has access from a secondary street and Astero, that the access must be from the secondary street. There are going to be two entrances from Voorhees and one from Astero Boulevard. A deviation from LDC Section 34704B1A, which requires a minimum street setback for streets other than Astero Boulevard to be 10 feet, the deviation would allow a minimum of a zero-foot setback from Voorhees Street. And a deviation from LDC Section 341744B4D, which requires screening of refuse containers to not exceed six feet in height, the deviation would allow the refuse container screening to be a maximum of seven feet six inches in height. This request is to match the request the town council had in order to provide screening of the dumpster area for adjacent properties on a previous 7-Eleven site. The proposed development request should be evaluated according to Section 3485B and C and 34216 of the LDC. These findings and conclusions are listed in the staff report. Deviations must be approved, modified, or rejected per the findings in Section 342164. These findings can be found in the staff report. Several conditions are listed in the staff report, including a requirement to replace any landscaping damage during construction, as the proposed wall appears to be very close to the hedges that are existing on the neighboring property. This is the second reading of the CPD ordinance. At the first hearing, this was recommended for a second hearing unanimously, and it was recommended for approval at the LPA unanimously. I'm available for any questions you may have, and the applicant is also here.
All right, are there any questions from the applicant to the town staff? None? Okay. Council, questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicant please proceed with your presentation on this item?
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council. Ken Galander for the record. Just really keep this pretty short and sweet. Again, we have no public opposition, we've made no changes since the first reading, hearing on this. We're consistent with the comprehensive plan, your Land Development Code, and we just respectfully request the approval on second reading. Just always want to say we appreciate staff's responsiveness, working with them to get us to this point, and we're looking forward to moving forward with then the next steps in construction.
Questions?
Happy to answer any questions.
Ken, I meant to ask this on first reading, this is not germane to the approval process, more for history reasons, really. Did 7-Eleven own the property prior to Ian and rent part of the property to the gym? Did the gym own it and rent it to 7-Eleven? Was it a third party who owned it? Just trying to get a little history there.
I do not know those details, but we have Representative Mr. Heron here from 7-Eleven.
This is just for my own curiosity, has nothing to do with your process here.
Mark Heron, 7-Eleven. We owned the property and we leased the gym to the tenant.
Okay, and so now you're just going to assume full control of that property?
Yes, we're going to take full control of the property.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Yep. And just so everybody knows, one day later now, for their slurpees, just one day, one day. That's it, all right. Any other questions for Ken? All right, thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
All right, we'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the CPD for 3051 Astero Boulevard? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. And I will now close public comment. Request discussion or a motion from town council to approve, approve with conditions, deny with reasons, or a continuance to a time certain. Is there a discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll move ordinance 24-05 CPD 20230194, 3051 Astero Boulevard.
Second. We got a motion by Councillor King, seconded by Vice Mayor Adherold. Any further discussion? Nancy, you look like you're wanting to add something to it.
Oh, I just didn't... Sarah, can you confirm whether or not there were conditions on there?
Yes, there is four conditions.
Okay, so the motion is inclusive of those conditions? Is that correct?
Sure.
Okay.
As is the second. Okay. We got a motion and a second to include the conditions of approval. Is there any further discussion? Councillor King?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adherold?
Aye.
Mayor Allers, aye. Councillor Woodson?
Aye.
Councillor Safrid?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, thank you. Next is Resolution 24-56 SEZ 20230302, 450 Harbor Court, Rude Shrimp. A resolution of the town council, the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving, approving with conditions or denying special exception, SEZ 20230302, requesting consumption on premise for a restaurant with a bar/cocktail lounge that is visible from the exterior of the restaurant per Section 34-1264B2A.3 for the property located at 450 Harbor Court, providing for clarification as necessary, providing for conflicts of law, scrivener's errors, severability, and providing an effective date. If there are any town council members that has had an ex parte communication to disclose, please let us know the subject discussed and the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, any correspondence that you received, or any observations made of the site. Councillor King?
As I recall, none.
Vice Mayor?
I have had a litany of emails from both remonstrators, as well as supporters of this particular applicant. I've spoken with the owner, I've spoken with remonstrators, I've been to the facility or to the property many times. I think that's everything.
I have done all of the things you've already mentioned, so I will not... Do I need to re-say them all again? Everything he said, I have done.
No, that's fine, I'm going to ask everyone a question as we get to the end.
Councillor Woodson?
I too have had all of the same communications. This is in my neighborhood, so I know the property well.
Councillor Safrid?
Likewise. The only thing, I'm still trying to figure out how they didn't win the chili cook-off.
Well, duh, I was in it.
But you didn't win it.
But I didn't win either. Go ahead.
Okay, so we have made some disclosures of the record. Are you all, does anyone feel that they cannot be impartial and fairly address this particular application based on the criteria and the evidence and testimony that you'll hear today?
Councillor King?
Does the applicant want to ask any questions of any of the members regarding any disclosures that were made? Okay, we're good to go.
Okay. Sarah Prost has been qualified as an expert already by this town council, and based on her education and experience, has been accepted as an expert in the field of land use, planning and development in the town of Fort Myers Beach. Are there any other individuals who would like to be qualified as expert witnesses on behalf of the applicant at this time? Seeing none. Has a property owner applicant seen a copy of the agenda, backup materials from staff? They are nodding their head, yes. Go ahead, Sarah.
Good morning, Sarah Prost with Community Development. Lisa Launer, applicant, and Freeland Florida Holdings LLC property owner, are applying for a special exception to allow for consumption on premises for a restaurant with a bar visible from the exterior of the restaurant and outdoor seating. Section 341264B2A.3 allows restaurants with 50% of sales from food to have a bar, however, the bar may not be visible from the exterior of the restaurant. The Rude Shrimp Restaurant is constructed of storage containers and is completely outdoors, so the bar is visible from the exterior and has exterior seating. Therefore, the bar at Rude Shrimp requires a special exception approval to operate. The property is zoned commercial marina, which allows marina accessory uses. The code defines marina accessory uses as uses normally ancillary and subordinate to a marina, including but not limited to boat dealers, sales of marine fuel and lubricants, marine supplies, boat motors and boat parts, restaurant or refreshment facility, boat rental, minor boat rigging, boat repair and services, and motor repair. The original application for the Rude Shrimp Restaurant temporary permit was approved June 8, 2023. In November, planning staff was made aware that there was an outdoor bar in this location. Staff has suggested nine conditions of approval if the town council chooses to recommend approval for this request. These are the same conditions that were applied to the Beach Whale, special exception for outdoor bar, plus several that were recommended by the LPA. Staff has received several letters of objection and a letter of support, which the town council has received. The LPA recommended approval of this request. Staff is available for any questions you may have, and the applicant is also here.
All right, are there any questions from the applicant of staff at this time? No? Any questions for staff?
I have a question, and you may not be able to answer it, but it seems a little archaic, I guess, the viewing of a bar from the exterior. Do you have any history on that, or explain that, or?
It's been in the code since prior to my being here. We've had several bars that required special exceptions because of this.
Okay, thank you.
I also wanted to point out that the applicant is going to be presenting you with a new site plan. Staff is not necessarily in recommending approval of this, and one of the conditions is that the variance shall only apply to the lot as shown on the provided site plan. There are concerns regarding the location of the coastal AE flood zone and the location of these structures, so that will need to be approved. If we're not sure, we may want to remove that condition that says that it has to be that site plan. If they're not sure where things are going to go, I just wouldn't want them to be tied to something that we may not be able to approve.
Nancy, can we actually approve something without knowing where it's going to be?
So it's going to be subject to a approved site plan being presented. You basically are giving the discretion to staff to make that determination based on their new site plan. So you can make the decision, but you are delegating to staff.
To make the final approval?
Of the location of the site plan, yes.
Okay. Questions for Sarah?
So Sarah, when you say you're not necessarily in support of it, you're not necessarily in opposition to it either, correct?
We have to make sure that they're actually landward of the coastal, oh, what is it? The coastal AE flood zone, and the plan didn't show that, so it would be us figuring out, we'd have to determine the location of that coastal AE zone.
So at this point, it's fair to say you're just undecided, or just need more information?
Yes.
On the, excuse me, on the existing site plan that's in the packet?
The existing site plan in the packet, staff is comfortable with. It's the one that they're going to present today that we received late last week, so we're not... I spoke with the flood reviewer, she looked at it, but unfortunately, it doesn't show the location of the coastal AE zone. And looking at the FEMA flood maps, it appears that the structures will be in the coastal AE, and there are just additional requirements, and we need to make sure, and they may be able to put them in there, but with special requirements for how they're placed in that location.
And to the mayor's point, procedurally, then, if we were to delegate that decision to staff, would the applicant have the ability to appeal it to the full council?
Yes, there is an administrative appeal process. The other option you have is to continue it, which I probably don't want to do, which would allow, continue the agenda item to a date certain, which would allow staff some time to go through and look at the very, the new site plan that has been given. It's a little unfortunate at this point, but sometimes things like this happen.
Well, just when you thought it couldn't go ahead.
I think we should just, I think we should hear from the applicant.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that we hear from the applicant and maybe answer a couple of questions, and we'll follow back up with you.
Sounds good, thank you.
The applicant, please proceed.
Good morning, is it still morning? Thank you. You got it, thanks.
Good morning, thank you. Just for the record, what Kara is handing us is a site layout of the new proposed layout.
Kara Stewart, representing Lisa Launer's and the Freeland Group for 450 Harbor Court. The site plan, let me explain, since that seems to have come up here quickly, the site plan is representing what is on-site today. When I went through the files, there were multiple site plans that were there, so we have taken the position that what is out there right now physically is what we should be representing to you. The issue with the coastal AE, the tent and this area, the 78 by 90 area... The issue with the coastal A, the tent and this area, this seventy-eight by ninety area, will be seaward of the coastal A. Sarah and I spoke briefly, or emailed briefly on Friday about it. And what the concern is, is in a coastal A, there's some discussion whether or not a temporary structure needs to be treated like a permanent structure. So that's where we just had a little bit of a disconnect on Friday. However, the applicant is willing to, if we go forward with this today, we know that we will have to come back to staff to resolve our temporary permit to reflect this site plan. We are willing and able to do that, and at that time, resolve the issue as to whether or not the structures just get removed from the site in the event of a storm, or if they need to be made storm worthy where they sit today in a temporary fashion. That I believe is the conflict that we're having with staff that came about on Friday. Part of the application is to provide a evacuation plan. The applicant has done that and contracted with a vendor that would be able to come in within, I think it was a forty-eight hour notice, if there was an evacuation order, to remove all the equipment from the site. So we had taken that approach as opposed to making these structures permanent worthy as though they were staying there forever. The trailer or the storage containers by FEMA's regulations cannot be a permanent fixture there because they do not comply with breakaway walls. So there is some conflict, there's just some conflict going on, but we are in a position as far as a temporary use goes, to go forward as a temporary use and either acknowledge that we have to evacuate these structures and/or if we would need to make them flood compliant, meaning have your flood vents and probably a tie-down, is what I understand the conflict to be. Unless, person's not here. But that is what I believe is the conflict as far as that goes. So in the meantime, we were willing to go forward with the site plan and say, we know that we need to resolve one way or the other with this location, since this is where we've resolved some of the music issues and some of the noise confusion that had taken place. So it was kind of important to say, this is where we want it. This is where we're here for a bar that is visible. That's the whole purpose here, is just really for the bar that's visible. The bar is visible from the water in this configuration. It is not necessarily visible from the back because you don't know that it's a bar. It's just the back of a container. So that's the request today. It's because the bar is visible, so the bar's location has been depicted on here for you to be able to take a look at. The noise issues that were brought up at LPA and prior, I believe you had a neighbor or two that were making complaints about the noise, the noise has been addressed. The location of the speakers have been angled and permanently wired facing away from the public and towards the water. The owner or the applicant also has her own sound meter. She has spoken to all the musicians that come and play on a regular basis to make sure that they're in compliance as well.
Kara, before you move on from that, looking at this, the stage is going to go back to where it was originally? The speakers will be?
Correct, correct. The performer will be on that corner where it says stage, but the speakers have been recessed back facing out to the water. So the speakers are probably, I should say, like over where the bar is, and they're facing outward. So there is a container around the whole thing blocking that sound as well.
So I also have a question on the noise and the music and that type of thing. This whole ordinance has to do with a visible bar.
Correct.
So how did all this other get in here?
I think there were some.
And should it be?
I think there were some neighbors, and it, the outside, we're outdoor seating. The request has been, not even the request, but the resolution is including the outdoor seating portion of it as well. If you were not in a temporary fashion right now and not dealing with something on a temporary basis, a permanent restaurant with outdoor seating would require a request as well. So it's the outdoor.
Questions for Kara? John, any questions?
No.
Vice Mayor Errol?
So Kara, what you handed us just codifies what is there now, is that right?
Correct.
All right, thank you. I have no additional questions.
Counselor Woodson, any further questions?
So my understanding though, too, that the actual restaurant, the whole setup was going to be moved once the Coast Guard vacated the spot so they could make provisions for that? Is that still?
I had heard, I had heard some of that as well. I've kind of come in this on the end, that there was a proposition to relocate them back, actually, it would be closer to the residence if you did that. If you relocated them, they would be actually set back, and it's actually, might even be on a separate strap number from where this application is right now. I don't believe that that is the same plan going forward. I believe they're looking to stay at this location for that temporary time. And we are, again, just let me reinforce that we are accepting and okay with having to come back in six months and have this re-looked at and reported on. Thank you.
Counselor Safran, questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
So that was going to be my question, is the applicant okay with the nine recommendations of approval from the LPA?
Yes, we are.
The only question I would want to maybe clarify a little more is number three, coming back every six months. Is there something that we can put in there? I don't want to, six months from now, get into, well, we never received notification that there was going to be a meeting. Is there something that we could put in there that the town will send a certified letter? Or how can we do this so that six months from now, we don't have an issue of, nothing was mailed, I can't prove it was mailed, I didn't get it, I missed it?
Well, speaking to that comment, I think at a prior meeting that there was some discussion and delegation to, in our ordinance, that's the expedited variance process, that if the matter goes to the LPA and the LPA didn't have any objections, it was unanimous, no one objected, that it wouldn't have to come back to you, and that may fall into that category.
Well, I guess I'm just looking at the underlined section that says the special exception shall expire if the applicant fails to coordinate with staff and attend the semi-annual public hearing review. Renew, so we're putting the onus on the applicant to contact staff every six months to do it, is the way I read it?
And that's acceptable, that's fine.
Okay. So then we don't have to worry about what I just said. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page.
If I may add a little bit to my prior comment, as far as a continuance, I did speak with staff, and they did receive this on Friday, and they do somewhat would like to have the opportunity to review it. You do have another meeting this week on the fourth. We could have perhaps a special, have a special meeting so you could make a final decision that would give staff and the applicant some time just to try to resolve the issues on the site plan during that period of time, two days.
You got a look on your face, Kara.
I would just want, what it is that staff has to review, the ordinance for the temporary trailers require them to be set back the same width of the trailer from the property lines. We are well in compliant with that. They are correct. They only received this on Friday. There have been a lot of site plans floating around. The issue with flood really, in my opinion, right now, wouldn't have anything to do with this request, except if we were not able to comply with the flood requirement and had to not, and had to relocate this bar, because this request is about a bar being visible. It was my only comment on it.
Want to come up?
So what the code section says is that structures in coastal A zone must be on wheels with quick disconnects for utilities. If the structure is only used for storage, it needs to be properly vented, strapped down to prevent flotation, and no electrical. So it depends on what the structure is, whether it needs to be on wheels, or whether it needs to be strapped down and vented. So it would just be a matter of making sure that the structures comply, and since we don't know how, we don't know exactly where, with the plan that we were given, we don't know exactly where the coastal AE zone begins, and we don't know what type of structures they're proposing.
So you're requesting a continuance just till Thursday to be able to understand where that zoning comes in, or where that line comes in?
It's an option. I'm sorry to jump in.
No, I'm just trying.
Okay. So, yeah.
So what she just said, I think is, they're okay if it gets approved with the determination made by staff? Come back up, Kara, to clarify what you were trying to say there.
What I'm trying to say is, we acknowledge that something will have to be worked out between staff and us in relationship to flood compliance. The code that she's referring to, and I don't want to get into the code right now, but the code that she's referring to is for a permanent structure. So that, the only issue is whether or not we will be, at least from our perspective, is whether or not we will be dealing with an evacuation plan, which just removes the structures from site and/or if we're going to tie them down and make them flood compliant, if we have to do that, we will do that.
Let's see, Kristen, can you come up? You're the floodplain expert here.
The issue, if she's saying it's not permanent, then it would have to be on wheels, too, the storage structures. We're trying to get it where, put the storage, you have to properly strap it down and properly vent it, so in case a flood does come, it's not on wheels, you're not going to quickly come and take it off the island. So it's not necessarily for a permanent structure. It could be the temporary one that you can't quickly move. So either the storage would have to be on wheels or tied down.
And that's the only building in this layout that you're referring to, is the storage building itself?
Storage, any habitable space would need to be on wheels, quick disconnect with electrical plumbing, and I think that, there's two storage units, right? Okay.
Three storage.
Oh, three storage containers.
There's three, like shipping containers that have been being used. Those would have to be the ones that are modified, the ones that are on a chassis with wheels, just driven away.
Right. So which ones on your plan are the ones that would need to be either strapped down or have wheels put on?
The bar.
Yep.
The merch, the...
Storage.
Storage, and the one that has the four tables inside. The one that is, I'm going to say perpendicular to the...
So that would, those four would need to either have, according to you, Kristen, would either need wheels or be strapped down with venting.
Anything required for the restaurant use, the sitting area, the kitchen, the bar, those all need to be, they need to be on wheels. Storage gives you the flexibility, because there's nothing more into it than storage to strap it down.
Okay. Now I understand. So storage needs to be strapped on, and everything else has to have wheels or be mobile?
Correct, yes.
According to the flood? I think we're making the argument, too. Let you guys work this out a little bit more.
Yeah, maybe.
Does anyone, it seems like there's still some things that need to be worked out. Does anyone have any objection to wait till Thursday to, do we have to finish this and add a good public comment and all that?
You can take public comment, and then it would be a motion to continue to a date certain, which would be Thursday's special meeting, which Amy can advertise, and it would just be this one approval.
One item.
Yes.
Is that enough time?
Enough time would be dependent on staff if they can get it worked out.
I mean, her announcing it, is that enough time?
Yes, yes. That would be sufficient.
Okay.
I believe that it would be adequate time. We do have a survey of the property, so we do know where the coastal AE is. This site plan has just not been overlaid on it, so we wouldn't know for sure. So we don't currently know for sure.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Sarah. Kara, do you need to, you want to add anything more before we call public comment? No? Okay. Public comment, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this matter? If so, please come forward to the podium and identify yourself, provide your address and whether you were sworn in. Public comment? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Jay Bonema, and we live directly across the canal from West Marina at seven twenty-five Matanzas Court. I know we've been attending meetings of the LPA and the town council. Way back in June, we brought this to the town's attention. And so, thank you that we are finally here to be able to speak to you today. So there were a lot of things that were said at the March twelve LPA meeting, and I just want to clarify, we do not have any personal vendetta against the Rude Shrimp. We wish them well. And so, you know, it's all started as a problem with the loud live music, and had the Rude Shrimp been good neighbors from the beginning, and had the town help resolve the issue when it was brought to their attention, we wouldn't be here today. So thankfully, Mr. Ben Freeland, their landlord, stepped in and helped resolve the problem. So we are thankful that the Rude Shrimp tried to change their setup, and the loud music, I mean, the noise already improved, and we are very thankful for that. So as residents, you know, we had to defend our property rights. So for people who don't live on the island or who don't live close to the marina, they will never understand. So this variance will have a, you know, direct impact on the neighborhood, like across the canal where Matanzas Court is. So we support the town in its efforts to help small businesses come back, and we also ask, though, that in those efforts, we also ask for your help to support the residents, too. We hope that the Rude Shrimp will honor their commitment to be good neighbors. If you must approve the variance, we hope you will keep all the conditions of approval. That's all, and thank you very much for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. I will now ask, request a discussion or a motion from town council to approve, approve with conditions, deny with reasons, or a continuance to a time certain discussion. Vice Mayor?
I'm just going to ask this, and I understand if we have to wait till Thursday, but if we took a break for five minutes, could this be resolved, or do you need more time than
I think just allowing them a little bit, what's two more days in the grand scheme of things if we're making sure everybody's on the same page? It's fine, okay. I will make a motion then to continue till Thursday, the fourth. Do we have a time?
At a special meeting.
At a special meeting.
After the MMP.
After the MMP, so we'll set the time as...
There's two items on the MMP.
So we'll say eleven o'clock, that gives us enough time.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote? Aye. Counselor King?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Errol?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Counselor Safran?
Aye.
Our motion is unanimous. We'll see you again on Thursday. Want to take a quick break before we?
Yes.
We'll take a quick ten-minute break and come back ten fifty-five. We'll take a quick 10-minute break and come back 10:55.
Okay, so I skipped this part last time at the LPA, and they brought me up anyway, so I figured I'd jump up. For the record, Keith Long, I am an attorney with Long Law here on behalf of the applicant in this matter. For the purposes of this hearing, I am the attorney of record, I'm a land use attorney, been doing it for 10 years, and I'm an alcoholic beverage law attorney as well. I don't know what other qualifications you might require in order to...
Is there a motion to approve Mr. Long as an expert witness on behalf of the applicant?
Second.
Got a motion by Counselor Safford, seconded by Counselor King. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done. Motion carries your next day. Thank you, sir. Mr. Smalley, take it away.
Good morning. My name's Jason Smalley. I'm with your planning and zoning department within the community development. Good morning to all the counselors and all the staff. Before you today is a special exception request by Waves Island Bar Limited Partnership. They are here with their representative. You've just heard from Mr. Long. The request today is for Mr. Waves to get a designation as a bar and cocktail lounge. The necessity for, the reason for this is it opens up the ability for them to continue using their type of alcohol license in the hypothetical situation in which they have a month in which they do not reach the 51% of receipts being food. Our code requires that any bar or cocktail lounge that is within 500 feet of certain types of uses, in this case, two parks, need to come in for special exceptions. So that's what they've come in today to request. This is going to be for a standalone business. It is attached to another building, but it is a standalone unit, and their uses are all interior to the bar. Again, the request today is really to just get a designation as a bar or cocktail lounge. At the, at the LPA meeting, there was some discussions and a condition of approval that was recommended, and that would be that they would continue to serve food even in those hypothetical times in which their receipts did not hit 51% food. So that was requested of them. They had indicated they agreed at the LPA, and so that was made a condition of approval. That final vote before LPA was 7-0. The staff has recommended a conditional approval, also with the conditions that have been proposed at LPA. If there are any questions or concerns, sorry, I'm booming here. If there are any condition, or excuse me, questions or concerns for staff, we are here for that. Otherwise, as I mentioned, the applicant and their representative are here as well.
Are there any questions from the applicant for the staff at this time? No? And I didn't ask this before, but has the property owner or applicant seen a copy of the agenda backup materials from staff? Yes. Okay. All right. Questions from council for Jason? Anyone? You're leaning in, Officer Woodson. No? All right, we're good for now. Mr. Long? And I did not realize that you were a member, or you are a member of the Cape Coral City Council, so...
Depends on who's asking.
Thank you for your service.
Absolutely, likewise. And again, for the record, Keith Long, on behalf of the applicant here, which in this case is Mr. Waves Island Bar General or Limited Partnership. Again, as Jason had indicated, this is more of an administrative-type use. There's not any presentation, there's no land changes going on or taking place here. Just to kind of flush out the need, the code currently necessitates that a bar cocktail classification within 500 feet triggers the need for a special exception request. In my opinion, if you look at the aerials and the way that the property is situated, that's less of a concern because of the way that it's oriented. But a lot of the questions, particularly from staff and at the LPA, were about the bar cocktail classification. The reason that, as I'm sure all of you are aware, they currently are operating as a restaurant, doing very well and widely accepted by the community. But the beverage law, the only way to sell alcohol in the state of Florida for consumption on premise is either via two mechanisms. A restaurant license, which is what's called a 4COP SFS license, which is what they're currently operating under. And that license requires 51% or more food sales from food and non-alcoholic beverages. And then the other one is a non-restricted quota license, which is what you'll typically see at like a bar or a cocktail lounge or something like that. The reason why they want to move to that is because at any given date, it's something, particularly in an area such as this, where you tend to, some variances in the food sales and the alcohol sales based on spring break or what have you. The state of Florida DBPR has strict adherence requirements for that 51%, and at any point in time, and they're subject to audit annually. Any point in time, if the state comes in and audits you, and you're found to be outside of that compliance even by one percentage point, they file an administrative case to revoke the license. So what the applicant is doing here is looking to ensure, hedge against those slight variations in those food sales by placing the quota into that location, and thereby the bar cocktail classification. For reference, it's the same exact license that Margaritaville right across the street is currently using in their location.
Question I have for you, under that license, does it allow for package sales as well, then? That, that particular license?
Well, that license can be placed into a package store location, but it wouldn't be entitled to them by right at this particular use. That would be a, we'd have to get approval from the town in order to facilitate that type of use.
The other question I had was, I watched the LPA hearing, and I know that they have no intention of not, ever not serving food, but with, if this was to get approved, could they technically say, we're just going to serve a pot pocket, and that would cover foods?
Funny you say that. We used that during COVID. Not at this location. Yeah, theoretically, you could. It wouldn't be good for business. I mean, the numbers are close. It's not a, it's not a situation where they have a desire to be in a position where they're only a bar and a cocktail lounge. It doesn't make sense. I believe last time at the LPA meeting, he'd indicated they had even opened for breakfast, which obviously is more food-centric. So this is really just an administrative sort of hedge in order to do that. You could, you could imply some sort of condition, I would assume, if it was your will, to acquire that they serve full service... that they serve full service meals at all times, that the hours are open. That's actually in Florida statute currently for the restaurant license is a requirement of the use. But again, as you know, those sort of conditions are only as good as your ability to enforce them. But I guess it would provide a mechanism for you to utilize in the event that it became problematic.
Well, I haven't heard any, I mean, other than at the LPA, I know there was some concern about it becoming a nightclub or just a bar only and not actually serving food, and I don't know. I know there's a recommendation in here that is for the, you know, that they could drop below that 51%. And although our intent today may be one thing, what is it gonna be, you know, six months or a year from now?
Sure.
Should that start, you start seeing the food sales go down and down and down, your alcohol sales going up. So I don't know if this goes far enough or if it's even a big enough deal for my fellow counselors to add anything to it. I just wanted to ask your expert opinion of, could that technically be something they did?
Theoretically, in the sense that anything is possible, yeah, that's an opportunity that would, that would exist.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Long? Counselor King?
None.
Vice Mayor Adheral?
None.
Counselor Woodson?
None.
Counselor Safran?
None.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
We'll open it up for public comment. Are there any members of public who wish to comment on this matter? If so, please come forward to the podium and identify yourself, provide your address, and whether you were sworn in. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing and request discussion or a motion from Town Council to approve, approve with conditions, deny with reasons, or a continuance to a time certain. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, did you want to enhance that food condition?
Well, if it's the will of the council, I mean, I don't, what could you really put in there that would, there's not a ton, and I don't want to get over, I mean, it says that they have to serve food, so I just was curious if someone really wanted, not that I expect, I know the owners have no intention of doing that, but...
I mean, if you want to try to qualify or characterize food...
Well, could we, could we, could we put in there, would this carry over? Should they sell the business and the license to someone else? Would these conditions carry over?
Yes. Because it's a special exception.
Would anybody entertain that these conditions will meet for this owner, but should it be sold to someone else that they have to come back before the council? I don't know that, you know what I'm saying?
Conditions, so I think what you're saying is perhaps that they record a separate restrictive covenant, something along those lines? Just putting it in the public record as a separate standalone condition as opposed to a condition for approval? But I honestly, I think that the condition in your approval would be more, would be easier to enforce through your code enforcement department rather than a restrictive covenant.
So what's your legal advice?
I think, I mean, if things change, if things change, you're gonna hear about it right away. And I think that, you know, I think that it is still clear enough that code enforcement could go in and enforce that condition that's in there now.
Okay. All right. With that, then I will make a motion to approve Resolution 24-41 with conditions as set forth in the conditions of approval by staff.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Vice, or Mayor Adheral, seconded by Counselor Safran. Discussion?
Only thing I would just add is that, just prior to Ian, I had, I had lunch with the President of the Chamber as well as the General Manager for the cottage, and they were seeking similar relief because there were certain times of the year that they just dipped below that 51% number and it really caused them some business planning challenges as well as jeopardized their license potentially as well. So I think this is a legitimate issue and I support the effort here.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mayor Adheral's aye. Counselor Safran?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adheral?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Next is Resolution 24-57, variance 20240046 for 718 Astero Boulevard. A resolution of the Town Council, the town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving, approving with conditions or denying variance VAR 20240046, requesting a variance from LDC Table 34-3 of 15 feet, providing a 10-foot front setback. The LDC requires a single-family home in the RM zoning district to provide a minimum of 25-foot street setback for the property located at 718 Astero Boulevard, providing for clarifications as necessary, providing for conflicts of law, scrivener's errors, severability, and providing for an effective date. If the Town Council, if any Town Council member has had any ex parte communications to disclose, please let us know the subject discussed and the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, any correspondence that you received, or observations made of this site. Counselor Safran?
I have none.
Counselor Woodson?
None.
I have none as well. Vice Mayor Adheral?
None.
Counselor King?
None that I recall.
Okay. Sarah Post has been qualified as an expert already by the Town Council and based on her education and experience has been accepted as an expert in the field of land use, planning and development in the town of Fort Myers Beach. Are there any other individuals who would like to be qualified as an expert witness on behalf of the applicant at this time? Yes, sir?
Good morning. Zachary Liebetrue on behalf of the applicant. I'm a land use attorney here in Fort Myers. I have appeared before you all several times and before the LPA several times as well.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Liebetrue?
Liebetrue.
Liebetrue. Liebetrue. Liebetrue. None? Is there a motion to approve Mr. Liebetrue to, as an expert witness?
So moved.
Got a motion by Counselor King, seconded by Counselor Woodson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're now an expert. All right. Has the property owner applicant seen a copy of the agenda backup materials from staff? Yes. He said not, yes. Go ahead, Sarah.
Good morning. Sarah Post with Community Development. Mr. Zachary Liebetrue on behalf of the owner of 718 Astero is requesting a variance from Table 34-3 of 15 feet from the required 25-foot front street side setback to provide a 10-foot setback from the property line closest to the two and parallel with Astero Boulevard. In June of 2023, Resolution 23-65 approved a two-and-a-half-foot variance for the east side of the property to allow a five-foot side setback. However, since that approval, the developer discovered an error in the location of the CCCL on the plans. Due to this error, the proposed home will need to shift landward approximately 10 feet in order to stay out of the environmentally critical zoning district. The property is zoned RM and is one of the non-conforming cottage lots that is accessible by a 15-foot easement. Seven and a half feet of the easement runs along the west side of the subject property. The surrounding properties are similarly sized, and it is anticipated that many of the homes will either choose the administrative variance allowed for cottage lots or will need to request setback variances. The proposed cottage is larger than the previous cottage on this parcel, therefore the applicant is unable to utilize the administrative cottage code. Staff is available for any questions you may have, and the applicant is also here. The LPA recommended unanimous approval for this request.
Okay, there's, thank you, Sarah. Are there any questions from the applicant of staff at this time? Can't see him. No? All right. Questions from council for staff? Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Mr. Liebetrue?
And I have the slide presentation to give out.
Mr. Liebetrue, just would suggest, appreciates your presentation, but just remember that it passed unanimously from the LPA. We don't have to get too granular, I guess, because we usually watch those hearings.
All right. Good morning, council members. I'll try to be brief. I'm Zachary Liebetrue with Retschel &amp; Andrus on behalf of our client, the Zeller family, regarding approval of the front setback variance, reducing the setback from 25 feet to 10 feet. For some background, our client had previously appeared before you requesting a variance to the side setback, which was approved last year. Following that approval and during the initial development process later that year, it was discovered that the CCCL line drawn for that variance application was in the incorrect location. When the survey pins for the CCCL line could not be located, the surveyor understandably assumed that the pins had been washed away during Hurricane Ian and was directed to use the lines as depicted on the property appraiser's website, which proved to be incorrect. Had this justifiable error been discovered prior to the original variance application, our client would have requested this front setback at the time of the original variance application. So as depicted on the slide, our client is committed to maintaining the character of the previous cottage while making the necessary changes to comply with the ADA code and improve the structural integrity of the home. It's important to the Zeller family that you know this family has been in possession of the property since the 1960s and wants to rebuild in order to capture the essence of the original structure on the property. Furthermore, it is important to know that the three owners adjacent to the property have provided letters of support for the variance reducing the front setback. And as you heard from Sarah, staff is recommending approval and agrees that we meet the governing criteria in the code. Accordingly, we respectfully request approval of this variance resulting in a 10-foot setback. And additionally, today we are requesting another motion for a waiver of the variance application fee because we have already obtained the variance for the reduced side setback last year. And today, this resubmital is solely to address the issue with the CCCL line, and we understand it required little in the way of staff time to prepare and review the staff report. As such, we would request waiver of the application fee, seeing as how it has already been paid once for what is essentially the same issue. Thank you.
How much is that fee?
$1,800.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Liebetrue? None? Okay.
Thank you.
Sir? Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this matter? If so, please come forward to the podium and identify yourself, provide your address, and whether you were sworn in. Any public comment? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing and request a discussion or a motion from Town Council to approve, approve with conditions, or deny with reasons, or a continuance to a time certain. Discussion or motion? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of Resolution 24-57. I think this is a little different than our normal, than what we envisioned from the expedited procedures because, because of the request for waiver of fees, the LPA would not have the authority to do that, therefore would have to come to the council regardless of the new expedited procedure, procedure. But I do think it's a reasonable request, and I would move its approval.
Got a motion by Vice Mayor Adheral?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Woodson. Any further discussion? Nancy, look like you would like to add something to...
I'm sorry. So the issue of the fees, is that a separate, was that part of the motion?
Yes.
Or do you want two separate motions?
I would prefer two separate motions, because in one motion you are serving as a quasi-judicial body. The waiving of the fees, you are serving in an executive fashion because that's money that would have been coming to this town.
That's fine.
Okay.
So the first motion is going to be for approval or for the...
For approval of the, of the variance.
And do you understand that with your second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? All right. Vice Mayor Adheral?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Counselor Safran?
Aye.
Mayor Adheral's aye. Counselor King?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Now the second motion?
I would move the waiving of the fee as it respects to Resolution 24-57.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Vice Mayor Adheral, seconded by Counselor Woodson. Any further discussion? Is that also a roll call vote because it, or is it...
You should do a roll call because money's involved.
Sounds good. Vice Mayor Adheral?
Aye.
Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Counselor Safran?
Aye.
Mayor Adheral's aye. Counselor King?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next is item G, Resolution of the Town, it is for Resolution 24-58, variance 20240027, 250 Tropical Shores Way. A resolution of the Town Council, the town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, approving, approving with conditions or denying variance VAR 20240027, requesting a four-foot variance from Section 34-638 5A1, which requires an additional 12 feet of street setback for residences wider than 65 feet, instead providing an additional eight feet of street setback for the property located at 250 Tropical Shores Way, providing for clarifications as necessary, providing for conflicts of law, scrivener's errors, severability, and providing for an effective date. If any Town Council member has had any ex parte communication to disclose, please let us know the subject discussed and the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, any correspondence that you received, or observations made of this site. Counselor King?
None that I recall.
Vice Mayor Adheral?
I did have a conversation with one of the neighbors, and they were supportive of the variance.
Okay. I did not have any conversations, have nothing?
I have nothing.
Counselor Safran?
Nor do I.
All right. Jason Smalley has been qualified as an expert already by this Town Council and based on his education and experience has been accepted as an expert field, in the field of land use, planning, and development in the town of Fort Myers Beach. Are there any other individuals with, who would like to be qualified as an expert witness on behalf of the applicant at this time? You've already, you've already been qualified, yes. And has the property owner applicant seen a copy of the agenda backup materials from staff? Yes, they have. Okay. Jason, take it away.
Good morning. My name's Jason Smalley with the Planning and Zoning Department. The applicant before you is requesting a variance, well, actually, if I could take a step back real quick, just to clarify, the short title name that was read in there, I believe we were missing a D before the 5A1. I will make sure and go back and ensure that the D is added to there, but I think it's left out in the short title, so I apologize for that. Today before you is a request to reduce the additional 12-foot setbacks on a property that, or a structure that is wider than 65 feet. The applicant is proposing a structure of approximately 90 feet wide on a 120-foot wide lot. Therefore, the applicant was obligated to provide an additional 12 feet for those areas greater than 65 feet. So in this case, we're talking about roughly 25 feet would have been subject to the additional 12 feet of setback. Normal front setbacks would be 25 feet for a home. Because this home is greater than 65 feet wide, or proposed greater than 65 feet wide, it would require an additional 12 feet to 37-foot setback. So their request before you today is to instead provide eight feet of additional setback. That's a, that's a variance of four feet, the difference between the eight foot they'll provide and the 12 feet that's required by the code. The staff had reviewed this and based on the request of the structure being greater than 65 feet, staff viewed this as a design choice. They could have either made the house thinner, moved the house a little bit. There are multiple reasons from the applicant that they have chosen or do not believe that that is feasible to do that, and as such, they have chosen to come before you and request that four feet of additional variance, of four feet of variance, excuse me. As was mentioned in the code, these codes were in existence when they designed the home. We understand everything's gotten a little jumbled since the storm, but we just wanted to make that point because it was brought up in the applicant's, in the applicant's suggestions and their analysis of the, of the situation. So we wanted to clarify that the code was known, they designed it as such, and therefore they're, they're here today to request that additional setback if you, if you choose to grant that. Are there any, or excuse me, at LPA, there was a vote of six, six to zero with one member recusing themselves to recommend approval of the product, of the project. Are there any questions or concerns from council? If not, the applicant is here as well.
Is there any questions from the applicant of staff at this time? All right. Counsel, questions for Jason? So in their application, they stated that the rules were changed after their design, but you're saying, based on the documentation that's in the packet, that the rules were in place before the design?
That, that is correct. I can't establish when they first began designing this.
But when it was submitted.
But when it was submitted, the ordinance that covered that would have been, was introduced in 2302, the most recent revision to it, but the requirement of the additional, the additional setback of 12 feet existed prior to the amendment.
Okay. Thank you. Ken?
I do have a copy of the presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Ken, of course, you remember this passed the LPA unanimously, correct?
I do remember that. Okay. Just for clarification, is that, I'm not totally familiar with that process. Is that inclusive of the staff's recommendation, or is it just based on the LPA?
Well, I don't think it's in effect yet, correct? Nancy, this expedited procedure's not in effect yet, correct?
No, it is not. It has not gone to the LPA yet, but it's supposed to go this, this coming month.
Okay. Yeah. But I just, I only say that in principle, Ken.
Yes. I appreciate that. Good morning. Yes, we're still in morning. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, staff. For the record, I'm Ken Galander, Certified Planner here on behalf of the property owner, recognized as an expert. I do, I would like to go through the presentation here, a little bit of walkthrough. I think it'll help us explain and visualize what we're working with here, so. Just real quick, Bradley A. and Katrina M., the Boils Trust is the property owner with the neighborhood company and working also with Orlandini Development. Go through a little background of the request and findings and conclusion as part of our presentation. The subject property is just over a quarter of an acre, Tropical Shores Way. Future land use is mixed or residential. Zoning is residential conservation. There was a previous single-family residence with pool that has subsequently been demolished due to the impacts from hurricane. We're dealing with a residential area, Tropical Shores right-of-way, vacant and occupied residential structures, as well as waterway canal. This provides the aerial representation. Tropical Shores Way is a local dead-end road off of Astero Boulevard. The property is at the northern end of that, or northeast end of the, of the road. Again, looking at the request, again, it specifically requires any portion of the structure exceeding 65 feet in width, setback and additional 12 feet, thus providing for overall 37-foot setback from the right-of-way. Our request is a four-foot variance, providing for an eight-foot setback with the overall front setback being 33 feet. Why we're here is unfortunately, as so many dealing with the results of that catastrophic event and the damage in order from Ian, the property owner seeking to rebuild their home. They designed, really wanting to design a one-of-a-kind, architecturally unique home, intending to meet the development standards with no intent to seek and be in front of you with this variance. But it was determined at the, after the full design and the plans were finalized, a small portion, in order to fully meet that additional setback of 12 feet, simply wasn't being met. Our, the property owner and the team at that point evaluated their options. It would require a significant design change architecturally and structurally to those plans, feeling it was a hardship on that part. It was offered, and we have the opportunity to seek this variance. And by doing so, through those construction, the delays associated with that, so it was this desire to seek this variance before you today. This image was provided in your packet. This shows, if you look, it provides the 25-foot setback line. That's your overall front setback that's required for all structures. Also identified there is the 37-foot setback line, and then the 33-foot setback line that would, that we're seeking as part of this variance application. The next slide just kind of helps highlight what we're looking at. The red line is that 20-foot setback. The orange is the 37-foot. And when we look at what we're requesting is the green line represents that four-foot variation. And that area highlighted in yellow, that's the portion of structure that we're looking at in terms of the design and the elements of that building visually and representatively. It's very minimal in, in impact. So when we look at this situation here, our request is de minimis from the application of the standard and intent of reducing the massing of structures. This came before the council, and we recognize that that's an element that the town desires for not having these mass facades, these massive front aspects of these homes or buildings, and to provide that variation. And we believe the intent of the code is still being met even with this minimal 10% reduction from 37 feet to 33 feet. The design and the architectural uniqueness of the home is providing for that visual interest that the town has been seeking, and through that variation of the facade also creates that variation in roof lines. And that takes us to the front elevation of the home. And you can see it's, it's a very extensive element of architectural design, the varied roof lines, and understanding this is an elevation, you can't see necessarily the, the relief of the front of the home, but there's setbacks going on there, and that really provides for that articulation. This next slide, that's the portion that when we were looking at the site plan view over top, the yellow area, that's the portion that's setback within the structure here, highlighting that 10% reduction that we're looking at in the overall scheme of things. Again, we feel the design meets the intent of the code, going from 12-foot to eight-foot, and providing for those architectural features of variation. These next slides show the side elevation. Obviously, the portions of the building that we're looking at are setback, so they're interior really to the building, so they won't be visible by any of the adjacent property owners to the sides. So obviously, meeting our, the guidelines for this variation, we feel that the special circumstances and conditions unfortunately as a result of the hurricane have necessitated for us to seek this, but it is, in our opinion, a de minimis variance under the circumstances and will not negatively affect the public health, safety, and welfare. The intent of the code is more for the design elements of ensuring that we're not impacting the visual impacts of the, the town. We feel that there are extraordinary circumstances resulting from the hurricane. Again, we feel that the de minimis nature of what we're dealing with is applicable, and our position regarding the variance is sought specific to this property and situation results from the impact of Ian. And the one criteria about whether or not this needs to be adjusted, or resources expended to change the code, it was brought up at the LPA that this could potentially be something, this is actual application of the code that was changed, and we can see through this variance process, unfortunately, we went through this, we're still providing for that variation, the architectural uniqueness that the, the town has been desiring for these homes and other structures. So through that, we feel we're consistent with the Land Development Code, the application requirements. We obviously had unanimous approval by the LPA, and we respectfully request the town council approve the variance as submitted and presented before you today.
Thanks, Ken. I have a couple of questions for you. Who designed the house?
It was a, I don't know. It's an architect, architect group with Joe Orlandini's Development Group.
Is there a reason why they chose to not follow the code when they designed the house?
Well, our understanding was, it was, it was a missed effort of not designing it to meet that full 12 feet. So after they went back, it was, we acknowledged that through the scrutiny of scaling it, utilizing on paper, and staff did their job, they found that that was a component of it. But we feel through meeting the intent and the circumstances behind this, we would rather seek the variance to, before you today.
I understand that. I'm just trying to wrap my head around why a decision has to be made that could have been made before the design, so someone...
Sure.
The private sector missed something that has caused this process.
People, yeah. People make, yeah.
Sure.
Design errors and, but we recognize that, and we just feel that this process enables us to seek it for you today.
And I notice, one of the things that you mentioned that I've noticed has been talked about a lot, but I don't know how it can be, how it can be used is this, because of the hurricane, yes, we all know that we suffered, but again, this was designed well after the hurricane.
Understood.
And this is put in place. So trying to use that, in my opinion, as an excuse as to why the variance should be granted, doesn't necessarily sit well, doesn't make sense to me.
Okay.
But I, I think that the house is, is beautiful. I think what they've done is tried to meet all the things that we've done, but I just was curious on those couple of questions.
Understood.
Phil, any other questions for Ken? Counselor King?
None.
Vice Mayor Aderhold?
None.
Counselor Woodson?
Okay.
Counselor Safford?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now open it for public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this matter? If so, please come forward to the podium and identify yourself, provide your address, and whether you were sworn in. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing and request a discussion or a motion from town council to approve, approve with conditions, deny with reasons, or a continuance to a time certain. Is there any discussion or a motion? Well, since I want to say, I will make a motion to deny the request simply for the reasons that I stated. I feel that this is a design choice. I agree with staff that this could have been taken care of, and I understand people make mistakes, but based on the criteria we have to follow to approve these, I don't believe that it meets all those criterias. So for that reason, I would make the motion to deny. Is there a second? Not seeing a second.
Is there a specific criteria that we can refer to?
Well, one de minimis. Let me go back up and I can... The, let me go down. I had it, but I moved in to try to see how wide the house was. If someone finds it before me, please let me know what page it's on, because it was...
The 541? Findings and conclusions?
Yeah, I'm trying to get to the staff report there.
Yeah, 541.
541. A, that I agree with them, that there are not exceptional or extraordinary circumstances, that the condition, B, the conditions justifying the variance are the result of the applicant. I agree with C, that there is not a minimum, that, that the granted is not the minimum variance that will retrieve the applicant. And D, I agree with D.
Okay.
Is that enough?
Yeah.
Okay. But again, I, I think, but for those reasons, I would make a motion to deny. Is there a second? Not seeing a second, the motion fails. Is there another motion or further discussion? Anyone?
I mean, I would make a motion to approve Resolution Number 24-58, variance 202-40027, 250 Tropical Shores Way. For a lot of things that were mentioned, trying to get the architectural vantage point of it, which we keep talking about, we don't want big box buildings. I know that for sure, but the way that the setbacks figure into the design is something that I think we're all moving towards. I watched the LPA meeting. I think they gave it a lot of scrutiny. There's a lot of conversation that went into things, so I would motion to approve.
Okay. Got a motion by Counselor Woodson?
We're just trying to verify, were there conditions?
There were general conditions in the end, nothing specific to this site, but yes, the staff would request that it be approved with conditions.
Those are just general?
Yeah, there's two general.
Okay. Approve with conditions. The two conditions, one and two, in there, general conditions.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion by Counselor Woodson, seconded by Counselor King. Further discussion? I just want to add again that it's, it, the only reason I'm going to vote against it is simply because I believe that someone didn't do their job, and it has caused you and your firm and the applicants a lot of time and effort that didn't need to be done. So it's for that reason that I won't support this, but I'm certainly glad they're building their house, and, and the neighbors seem to be happy about it, so. Any further discussion? All right. Roll call vote. Counselor Woodson?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Aderhold?
Aye.
Counselor Safford?
Aye.
Mayor Allers is no. Motion carries four to one. Congratulations. Next, we have the administrative agenda. First up is item A, CHNEP Policy Committee, a designation of the council representative, an alternative to the Coastal and Heartland National Estuary Partnership Policy Committee.
Mayor, we've been asked to provide, as part of our membership, a council member who would be willing to serve. As you see on the agenda, it's held every four months for about a half, every four months, three times a year, about a half a day per year. The next one is the May 23rd. Chad is an alternate to, to this, and we just need you guys, somebody to volunteer or step up or...
Didn't we already address this?
You did at a previous meeting, but they want an actual elected official.
But in their policies and procedures, it's, you don't have to have an elected official, it said, because I questioned that at the last time.
But now they're saying they, they need a, they need an actual council member to be representative.
Correct.
Okay.
There's an email they sent to the town asking that.
Okay. Chad, looked like she wanted to say something. No? Is there anyone that, nope, he's like, I'm good. Is there anyone that would like to volunteer to be the liaison? It looks like they meet three times a year for half a day in Port Charlotte, Putagorda area, with the next meeting being May 23rd of 2024. Is there any volunteers?
I would propose someone.
Okay. Who are you proposing?
Well, I would propose Counselor King because he is also the liaison for the MRF Group, and this is the Heartland National Estuary Partnership. It seems like it might be a good tie-in.
I will second that.
With friends, with friends like Karen and Scott, John, you know.
April fools.
Well...
I'd be glad to take it on.
You are a true, extra donut for, for John.
Yay!
All right, we have a, is there a motion? You want to make, is it...
I will move to appoint Counselor John King for this committee.
I will second that.
Got a motion by Counselor Woodson, seconded by Counselor Safford. Any further discussion? Thank you, John, for your efforts. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done? Congratulations, John. Carpool with Chad.
Aren't you usually supposed to do these when they're not here?
Yeah. All right. Next is consented administrative agenda item B, contract sale for 6231 Astero Boulevard. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, we've, you know, are in need of a, a permanent location for a town hall. We did a lot of research, a lot of work, and poured the island over and tried to come up with, you know, what would be the best solution for us. We found the property at 6231 Astero Boulevard, an existing structure that has withstood two hurricanes and Ian as well, with minimal damage. So we feel like it's a safe, sound structure and a good location. We are required by Florida statute to get appraisals when a purchase exceeds over a half a million dollars. We've done that. exceeds over a half a million dollars. We've done that. One appraisal came in at 5.56 million, the other at seven. The asking price is seven and that was what the offer was that I, the second offer that I gave. The first one was more in the five and a half million dollar, a little less range. And then we brought it up and it has been agreed to by the seller. What we need from you is guidance and approval to enter into a contract, enter into a escrow, to get all those details worked out, you know, through our attorneys, secure a real estate attorney with the guidance of our town attorney, and do all the things that we need to do now to start with the purchase of this particular property. And Frank and I have been working on this and Nancy's been part of this. So any questions you may have, we are here to answer.
Questions for Andy? There's a couple of questions I have that have been brought up from the public. One, obviously, traffic. Have you looked at the impact for staff being on the southern end of the island during season?
We have. Actually, you know, one thing that, that we all know it's, it's hard to avoid traffic. We will and will continue to look, just like we did when we were, when I got here, alternative schedules, figuring out what the best use of our labor pool is in relation to traffic and try to just come up with the best possible solution. But at the end of the day, you know, it's really short of building back where we are, which would probably cost probably upward of three times this, maybe four. We felt like this, at the end of the day, was the best solution.
And another question is, the interior of the building has been brought back into, I guess, I don't want to say compliance, but electrical is working, the, the stuff that needs to be working to be a habitable space is currently working within?
Yes, sir. All the mechanicals are working. Actually, if push came to shove and we needed a space right now, we could walk in there and start operating as a town hall now with minimal, with minimal upgrades. There are some other upgrades that need to be done, like finishing out the first floor that was damaged, but it can be put back to the pre-hurricane standards. So it would serve as the council chambers and a couple of offices, reception area. Other than that, the building is, is habitable.
And then the elevator? That's, the elevator is operational?
There's a few items that we put in for the condition of sale, one of which would be a full repair and operation of that elevator. It's currently, they're waiting, like a lot of places are for, for parts. But that was already put into the pending bill of sale.
And then speaking of conditions, the funding part of it from the state?
That was also put in there.
The language, yes, sir. Okay.
What's, what's their timeframe on the elevator, Frankie?
They said they're probably a couple of months out for getting, getting parts to repair.
A couple of beach months or a couple of?
I, I think it's through the Otis Elevator Company and it's well documented up and down the beach. All the condos that are still waiting for elevators are waiting for Otis elevator parts.
Okay. The earliest we'd have funding through appropriations anyway would be July 1st. That'd be the absolute soonest you could get the funding.
That is correct.
If approved by the governor. Any other questions for Andy?
I know there was some, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I know there were some comments and concerns about the parking situation and I think you have some ideas to address.
Yeah, we, we do. We are looking at some alternatives, some options down there. And this would be the first of one domino that would fall and we, but we do, don't want to, you know, get it out in the public too much now, but we do have some options to, to get additional parking in that area and work with surrounding areas and other businesses in the area that possibly during meeting times and that type of thing, anything we did. There is a space in there. I know I saw something recently about, you know, a room to rent out for, for clubs and things like, yeah, there, there'll be space for those type of things too. So yeah, we're, we're trying to, to look at a, you know, a little more, how we can make it a local building that can be used by the special interest groups, like, I shouldn't use that term, but, but like our clubs and things like that. And so we've got, we've got some, some good, we got a really good option there.
Vice Mayor?
Just a couple of questions. First of all, I commend both of you for breaking through on this property. I, I remember discussions about this particular property with our interim town managers who were wonderful, but they could not, they could not conclude the negotiations successfully. You gentlemen have. I think this is a huge game changer and I'll tell you why and I'll, I'll, I'll tell you in a way of a question. This is a $7 million acquisition cost for this building. Can you gentlemen give me a rough estimate as to what it would cost the taxpayers of the town of Fort Myers Beach or the state of Florida or our federal partners? If we were to build brand new here on Fort Myers Beach, what, what's the estimated cost or the range of that cost?
It's my understanding, prior to me coming, that the interim managers did look into that and the figure that they came back with and was an ask at the, at the state level was about $18 million.
25.
25 billion. So I would say at today's cost and at the delays and the, you know, how, how materials go up, it would be north of 25 million dollars.
So it's safe to say by acquiring an existing property, we're doing it at a savings of a third of the actual cost to build a new building for the taxpayers of Fort Myers Beach. Is that fair?
Yes, that's fair. At, at, at a minimum, a third.
Yep. I, I think that's outstanding. What's the square footage of the building?
With the lower, with the lower level, about 24,000 square feet. Thousand. I think the upper two finished levels are 17 something.
The, the nature of the negotiations have been, have been discreet, shall we say, and it's by necessity. Could you comment on that?
Well, obviously, anytime a, a government gets involved in, in trying to make a purchase of a property, sometimes the, the dynamics change. People, in my past experiences, I've used outside attorneys and things like that just to make calls. But we, this gentleman approached us after we had just kind of, were down there actually looking at a stormwater issue and we, I wandered over to the building and looked at it for the first time. It's probably been sometime over the last summer. I hadn't been here very long and, and we just started looking at it and it just so happened about a month, we kind of talked about it, Frankie and I did amongst ourselves. And about three to four weeks later, the gentleman walked in to the office and said, we've got a piece of property we want you to, to, to think about. And we're like, yeah, okay, whatever. Because you kind of get that a lot, you know, the town buy the property to do this. So we, we spoke with him and he came to us and it just kind of, you know, I had to speak with the attorneys and the authority that I have in, in the state of Florida and in most towns is that I can negotiate a price. I can't commit until it comes to this body. But it really worked well, surprisingly, that it was, it was kept pretty much under wraps, which really would work to our advantage and you don't get into a bidding war and that type of thing with, with other private entities, which could really drive the price up.
Andy, can you comment, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
Can you comment on what, so if we do approve this, what, what the status of this complex is going to be and going forward?
Absolutely. Good question. This is always going to be a temporary of some sort because we felt like if we ever built, it would be a three to four year process. So that's kind of was the plan going in here. Both of those kind of worked simultaneously at the same time. We thought the trailers would be here in October, November, so they drugged a little bit. As a result, we've got an opportunity, once this building's purchased and we start the process and we close, whether it be July or August or sometime like that, and we start the, the move in process and the rehabbing process and the remodeling process, probably around the first of the year. So we'll be almost, you know, a year into these, we've got an opportunity to buy a couple of these and continue to use these for some public works facilities, maybe even a senior center or something here on the property while we decide what to do on this property to build a permanent structure. So we've got, we've got some opportunity with leased trailers to maybe purchase trailers, sell them later, that, that type of thing. So we would just explore all of our options going forward and still consider those to be viable options.
And you're still going to have Public Works operating out of here?
It probably, we'd probably move trailers over to the backside of that property over there. There, there'd be, no mooring field offices will be over there. It'll be just strictly for the Public Works where the vehicles are parked now.
So a lot of the staff still won't have that traffic issue in season. They'll still be.
That'd be correct. Probably, I don't know, 20 to 25 of those employees. And also some of those will be moving to the North Tower. Once those offices are secured and the fence is put back up, we'll put utilities group down there. So they'll be, will basically be in three locations along the beach, plus four or five, actually, with the mound house and the, the recreation center. Right.
So what do you, what do you think the timeframe is of, by the time we close on this? And then I know there's things that need to be done to make it conducive for the town. What do you think the timeframe is for moving?
I've always been accused of not being able to give, you know, really accurate times. And Jackie Leesack will disagree with that statement. When I told her, you know, Bayside Park would be open by, by, you know, Labor Day, we got it. You know, thank heavens, right? I would say once we close and start taking ownership, it would probably four to six months, you know, we would probably, once we sign the contracts and stuff and we get closer, we will put an RFP out for, you know, a contractor to come in and help us start doing things to try to speed that. It's a 30 day process, get them in there. Of course, I can't control material delays, but it's basically cosmetic. It's not, it's moving a wall here, moving a door here, that type of thing. It's not real major. So that's the good part. Building a few offices downstairs with some steel studs and, you know, some sheet rock and that's done. So it's pretty minor, I estimate. But I would say four to six. I would like it to be more like four. So we, we shoot for the, you know, first of December, first of January of 2025, which as we all know, today's April 1st, it will be here before we turn around good.
Jim, you had a question?
Just wanted to follow up on that line of questioning about, and I would just yield to the town attorney here. Would you just elaborate a little bit on what the authority of the town manager is to negotiate a property transaction such as this?
Well, he, he does have the authority to, to negotiate it, just as he would with other agreements that come before you where you have staff negotiating with a potential vendor of a, of a property. However, because it is a real estate purchase, he is obligated to come forward with two appraisals, which basically is going to show you that the price, the expenditure of public funds is, is supportive of the ultimate offer, which is then brought to you in a public meeting as we're having today for your input approval or disapproval.
I would just say, I thank you. I would say too, that throughout this negotiation process, the town manager has kept myself as an individual counselor, and as I understand it, my fellow colleagues, although we were, discussed this separately with the town manager, we've been kept informed of these negotiations throughout the process, fully transparent in terms of his conversations with us. And I would also say that this offer to purchase this building that we're here today is contingent upon approval of the town council. So there's been an opportunity for folks to see and hear about this property prior to the vote. And I, again, once again, command both the town manager and our director of operations for rediscovering this property and making it happen. Because I think, again, from a taxpayer dollar standpoint, to, to have it be a third of, of the projected cost of what a new building would be is, I think, a real game changer. So I, I commend you for your efforts.
Vice Mayor, may I add one more item? Under Chapter 286, there is a requirement of the disclosure of who the actual parties in interest are. So the, the legal entity that holds title is an LLC. So there's a required affidavit, which at the time we were putting our agenda together, we didn't have it, but we got it on Friday. So it is in your packet. And that's basically to show the public in the policy of transparency that the people in that, involved with that LDC are not affiliated with the town in any other way. So that's another transparency checks and balance.
Very good. Thank you.
I think you meant to say LLC?
LLC. What did I say?
LDC.
Yeah.
I just have one question that's been floating out there. What, what are we looking at doing with the Old Town Hall property? Is there a plan yet or?
I think the last thing, the last thing we had discussed was a parking lot. Of course, we've got Public Works and the storage of the vehicles in the backside and our dumpsters, that type of thing. But at this point, we will probably be, you know, discussing with you more at length what to do and what direction to take. So we can, you know, use it, you know, what best suits the town going forward.
Thanks.
And as far as Joe's here, I don't know if he can answer this, as far as if this gets approved and moves forward with the escrow and is the funding there to fund that until? Because if, it will be contingent, obviously, on the appropriations request that we put in. That is in there, but there, the only hurdle left.
Our bill of, our potential bill of sale.
Contract.
Our, our contract that we did put a, a very favorable figure for escrow that we can more than handle.
Is that your recollection? Is that your understanding, Joe?
Actually, I have not seen that language. So I can't, you know, verify or confirm, but I believe that's the case.
Okay.
It basically is involved our town attorneys, Andy and myself, for drafting this.
Okay.
So the escrow is?
It's not touchscreen.
Sorry.
Do you want it up or down?
The finance. I'm sorry. We have an escrow deposit of $5,000.
Okay.
We have that.
Joe, Joe, it looked like your shoulder just went.
We can certainly cover that.
Okay.
That leads me to one, one, one additional question. God forbid, should there be something that happens adversely to the state funding request that's currently received positive reviews from the legislature or waiting approval from the governor? Do we have a contingency plan to finance this building? Should those, that $8 million from the state be somehow vetoed for whatever reason? Doubtful it will, but do we have a contingency plan?
Yes, there, there are several backup plans, so in the works.
Yeah, because regardless, we're still going to save the taxpayers a lot of money by acquiring this versus building new. So, okay, long as you have a contingency plan for what I hope will never happen. But, but, but that's helpful. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve or to deny?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for sale of 6231 Astero Boulevard in New Town Hall.
That motion by Council Woodson?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel King. Any further?
There is also a second part to that, authorizing the mayor or the town manager to execute any and all closing documents that might be needed.
Does it need to be both or can it just be one?
It can be one. You just put.
Says or.
Yeah. So I would authorize, included in that motion, authorize our town manager, Andy Hyatt, to do the negotiations and signing.
It's the typical closing documents.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll admit my second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done. Motion carries unanimously. The last administrative agenda item is Resolution 24-73, Development Agreement with Deviations. Nancy? I can do that. A resolution of the town council, the town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, making findings, approving an administrative code, setting forth procedures for the application and approval of development agreements with deviations and providing an effective date.
Okay, so basically, this is addressing one of the tools, one of the existing tools that you have in your land development code. It is found in Section 2-91 that provides for the execution of a development agreement. Within your existing code, there are two types of development agreements that can be approved by the town. One is a statutory development agreement. The other is a development agreement using your home rule authority and those powers that gives you a lot more flexibility. So you have existing code language. However, the code, your existing code language requires that procedures be adopted in order to implement the opportunity to, to do these development agreements. So the matter before you today is for the approval of the procedures that would allow the implementation of, of your code. At the LPA, there were many questions that came up and one of them was whether or not the development agreement itself could, could, not does, or always will, could include the possibility for a rezoning. And the answer is yes, in that the code language itself already provides for that. So the procedures did not go into detail about rezonings per se. The procedures instead go into detail about the necessary information that needs to be provided in order to submit the application and to, to go through the review process. So the process is basically that it allows the staff to. So, the process is basically that it allows the staff to, the town manager or the town manager's designee, to negotiate with a property owner applicant on a proposed development. It must be reduced to writing. Thereafter, there is a public hearing that is held before the LPA, and then a public hearing before the town council. The adoption of the procedures themselves cannot waive statutory requirements for consistency with the comprehensive plan or noticing requirements that may be, or that are applicable in the situation of a rezoning. The other types of development approvals that you have are those that are found in your land development code, which is basically generated by you pursuant to your home rule powers, so you have a lot more flexibility with those other items. So, to kind of simplify it, I would like to say that, just by a real quick analogy, is that in your toolbox, you have two tools. You have your statutory and you have your home rule authority development agreement, and your procedures are the battery that will allow you to use those tools. It does apply, I know the question was raised, whether or not it applies to big projects or small projects, there is no differentiation between that. A lot of the differences, if it's a small project or a large project, is going to be in the terms and conditions of that development agreement itself, which, again, is going to be negotiated by staff, reviewed by the LPA, and then coming before you.
So, I think to your, just to simplify it, even if it can be simplified even more, if approved, this does not automatically give away height, intensity, or density. It still has to go through the process, the hearing process of the LPA and the town council to get any approval.
Correct. And I will say, it is not a matter of right that you have. It has to go through the review process. During the negotiation of the development agreement terms, that's when a proposal would come forward, again, by the LPA and then by you. You have the ultimate authority and approval process. I do want to add that at the LPA, at the conclusion of our meeting, there were several changes that were recommended to the draft.
Page 783, if you're looking.
Yes, I can run through those real quick. One was to clarify that administrative changes to height and density were not permitted. Any change to height or density in an amendment to the, an approved development agreement would have to come to council ultimately. Adding the phrase "existing conditions" to Section 1.6 to read a survey of the existing conditions of the land showing the approximate location. Number three is adding language to require a fixed date or, at a minimum, a timeline, creating a new Section 1.18 to require identification and a list of public benefits. Section 2.2, similar to the comments in 1.8, which was a timeline. Adding setbacks to 3.2.1, which I think is just an oversight, and then deleting the term "sketch" in Section 1.15, that the feeling was that they can do a site plan, that that was not too onerous of a requirement. And then also, this is our recommendation, in Section 5.1, where it does talk about amending a development agreement, when it comes back for an amendment, it shouldn't be a restatement of it. It should not be a review of the whole project again. It would only be a review of the amendment that is being proposed. That's a distinction that has become problematic in other jurisdictions.
Questions for Nancy? John?
None.
Vice Mayor Etterholt?
I appreciate how Nancy broke this down, but I'd be curious, just from another perspective. Sarah, what do you think the practical impact would be if we pass this? Both on those applying and those who have to process the application? And Jason, I'd be welcome, your input as well.
I am not clear how this will work procedurally, or fully what the impacts are. I think that that's going to be, that's going to be in the details. Are we going to be creating additional language for the LDC, or is it just the procedures that are, the portion that you're working on that is going to change?
I believe it is just the procedures at this time. We may have to come back and amend them if it becomes problematic, but the idea was to provide another tool that possibly could use to help certain projects that are getting, you know, bogged down. It does raise the question of, in your existing code, in your LDC, it does talk about the town establishing a schedule of fees and charges, which shall be imposed for the filing and processing of such application. I would ask that maybe that be an additional item to be added on Thursday, so that way anyone who's been waiting for this process to come forward could actually begin applying, because otherwise, we would be waiting probably till the 15th of April to move something forward.
I'm fine with that, Nancy, but since Jason's over there pondering, do you have any comments, Jason, as to how this will impact those who are applying and those who also process the application?
Jason Smalley, planning and zoning. No, sir, I'm going to agree with Sarah. At this point, I don't think staff's just had enough time to really sit down and ponder the implications of this. I would bring up one thing that was brought up in previous meetings, which was a question of, does this create a perverse incentive to create a market for getting these things to the goal line and then allowing them to be sold off, a vanilla box, if you will, of plans? I think staff's going to look to that, just to see if we end up with a bit of an issue somewhat like the, like the beach vendor, where we've created a market and a value to these plans. I don't know that that's been addressed to staff. I don't know if that can be addressed, but I know it's been brought up previous to now.
I don't think the intent of this was to increase property value. I think, I think the whole, and I want to give a shout out to Patrick Benest, he's worked really hard on this, and I think he's done a fantastic job, but the goal always was to help the smaller guys get through this process, get shovels in the ground. This was not a boondoggle to help you increase your property value so you can sell. This, the whole idea of this was to make sure, to help people get their buildings back as quickly as possible and reduce the cost and the time. That was, that's the intent of this.
Those are my only comments.
And I think, I think everybody understands what the intent was, but I think what Jason's trying to say is the consequences have nothing to do with the intent. The intent to do something and what could potentially be a consequence from a decision, I think, is what staff is referring to, which I completely understand. And I, in speaking with Nancy about this, I don't, I agree with her, I don't know how this will be implemented or how it could be implemented, but, or if it will actually increase the time someone can get their shovel in the ground or will add to it. We don't know yet. We don't know how it's going to be implemented, so there's a lot of unknowns there. However, I thought, for me, I've been the one that's been the most vocal about what is the need of this. Staff is telling us that they don't necessarily see a need for it, or how it's going to really improve anything, because they can't say, yes, you can have 558 stories and unlimited density. They can't do that. That has to come through the process. So, if a small project or a large project is coming through this agreement, even if they say no, they could still move forward, and then it comes to the council and then, or the LPA, then the council, and it could still be a no. LPA could say no, and council could still say no, we don't like it. And did they really save time? And that's where I was always kind of caught up, like, but if, my feelings have been, if as long as that isn't the case, that people automatically, whether you were large or small, you don't get increased anything by right, just by going down this path, then I don't have an issue with it, if it can speed up. But the other side is, it could slow down, and it could lead to somebody going through the process, potentially getting more than what they are allowed, and increasing their property value, and then deciding to sell it. That's a consequence of being able to do this. At least, in my mind, that's how I see it. So, even though the intent isn't there, the consequence could be. Hopefully, that doesn't happen, but it's a possibility. So, I mean, I'm not going to stand in the way of this. I think if this allows people to try to get at least through a process, to start before they go down the entire CPD process, but I personally don't know how this is going to speed anything up, but until we see it implemented, we won't really know. Yeah, go ahead.
So, one thing that I think that it does sort of do, so, planning staff is not designed to be negotiators. That's not our role. Our role is enforcement of the rules and evaluation based on the rules that you've, that, you know, council and previous councils have created. So, our job isn't to work through, you know, what, we don't do the horse trading. So, maybe this gives the person coming in more of an ability to work with the group that can do the horse trading, whereas we're, we're in the position of, well, these are the rules, and this is what you can ask for, and this is what you can't ask for. So, there might, this might be another outlet. I think on staff's side, our concern is, is our role as the sort of implementer of rules, is that going to come too late? How will we make sure? Because then, when it gets to the site plan process, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. So, just making sure that the procedures ensure that everybody comes together at the end on a project that can actually be built, as opposed to something being agreed to and worked out at a council meeting, and then coming back to us on the site plan end, and public works saying, well, it doesn't do this, and it doesn't do this, and planning staff saying, well, there's not this, and there's not that. So, making sure that everybody, I mean, I think that's going to be the tricky part on this, making sure that at the end of the process, we end up with a development that can be built and will still work to the benefit of the whole town. So, I think that's going to be the end goal.
Well, and I think, what you're saying is, you were more articulate than I was when I've been trying to say this over the last couple of months. I think, to your point, anyone that's going to use this is essentially going to, if it was to go through the normal process, would get, if it wasn't a CPD, would get a no. It would be a denial, because they're, why have a development agreement if you're not going to ask for more than what you could get? So, you're not going to make that decision, you're not, to use your words, horse trading, you're not going to do that. That's going to come to the LPA, and that's where the devil in the details will be, and that's where I have a little concern. Again, I'm not going to stand in the way of this, we'll see how it works. And talking with Nancy, it's, once you get to the LPA, that's when the negotiations really start. That's when you, you have to have this, you can't do this, do that, do this, and then it goes to the council, and then the design starts, then it starts. But I think, to your point, once that has all gotten worked out, I think this is going to make for very long council meetings and LPA meetings, quite honestly, when we do see one of these, but it's, because now you're going to be working all that out in a public forum versus working it out with staff through the CPD process and then bringing it forward. So, I think you're going to see much longer meetings because of this, but I hope I'm wrong, but I think that's going to be a...
I think that's correct. And, you know, and some of, I'm going to use a large project as an example, and I think I may have mentioned it to some of you, is that a large project is coming to your town, to your community, and it might require some annexation of some adjacent property that's in the county. So, you have an annexation. Well, if you now have property, it's got to have a future land use designation. So, you need a comp plan, a small, an amendment to your comp plan to show what the future land use is for that. Oh, and now you need a rezoning. So, now you have that process. And then there might be a variance, and, or there might be something else. All of those things go forward with a development agreement that shows how they're all interconnected. Where your process is, by having this, is you would have your development agreement having all those interconnections, not the annexation, we'll get rid of that one, but, you know, bringing it all together as one big project in a development agreement, and your code is inclusive of a rezoning, as long as you comply with statutory provisions. So, it, you know, it's, how do you package it? Do you package it as one, or do you package it in pieces? And right now, I believe it's in pieces with specific criteria, and that's what's creating some of the delay. But if you put it all together, you still have to address all those things. So, at the end of the day, it may not be more expeditious, but we're willing to try. I mean, you have the legal authority to go forward and try that.
Well, I'm certainly for trying anything. If it speeds up, or if it allows people to save a little bit of money, and the public is okay with it, you got to give it a try, so.
Well, and if I could, Nancy, this isn't quite as radical as some might portray it, in that this is already exists in our code, correct?
It is in your code, and development agreements are used all over the state, big cities, small cities, medium-sized cities. It's nothing that is atypical. It's just, it's in your code, but you didn't have that battery, you didn't have that opportunity to actually implement it, and now, moving forward, you will have that.
Right. Does it accomplish, potentially, some of the things that Counselor Safford referenced? Could it, for smaller entities, could it help not only expedite the process, but reduce the cost of the process?
It can, but, you know, as Sarah points out, and I agree with her, devil's in the details. So, we don't know the scope of the whole project and what those cost savings may be, but yes, they could exist.
And there's always, and you've built into this, and I think appropriately so, you've built into this, you've not diminished the role of the LPA or the council as a safeguard, that's still built in as a safeguard. I mean, so...
It is by statute, because, again, bear in mind that your local planning agency, your LPA, is required by statute to make a finding that the proposal is consistent with your comprehensive plan, and that is one of the primary purposes of bringing these approvals to the LPA before it comes to you.
So, this, in essence, and I don't want to minimize it, but it's another tool in the toolbox. If somebody sees it appropriate for their situation, they could utilize it, and again, you still have the safeguards of the LPA and the council, and it's just another option, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And what you're voting on today is only procedural rules to allow that tool that was already existing to be used.
And to your point, this is, the big stickler thing I've had is having different agreements for different sized properties. I was always worried about, this covers that, right? This is, this is an agreement that covers every size property?
Yes.
Including, including a residential homeowner, if they wanted to.
Yes, but typically, I have seen them for residential property owners, yes. I have seen them in other communities, so I think that, yes, they would be included.
And that, for me, was the big, the big thing, is being, so that it didn't give an undue advantage to one size development or the other?
No.
That would put us in legal, legal trouble, which is not what any of us want, but...
But, you know, for the single-family residents, though, I mean, what would they need? They would typically need just variances, I would think.
Right.
Which, which would be kind of a site plan with deviations on the variances, so...
Well, depending on how big these houses are going to get.
Right, right.
It's hard to say, but...
And that, you know, that is the one that is most frequently used, is the site plan with deviations, because sometimes, when you request a variance for one thing, it's dependent on having an approval for a variance on another component, so you really can't vote on one without voting on the other, and this gives you that opportunity to review them at the same time, which you may not have if you're doing them separately.
Any other questions? No? Is there a motion?
I'll move Resolution 24-73, Development Agreement with Deviations.
I'll second.
We got a motion by Counselor King, seconded by Vice Mayor Etterholt. Discussion? The only thing I would ask is that the conditions that weren't put in?
Yes, the proposed changes, the amendments.
That were added?
By the LPA.
By the LPA, be added into the final draft agreement?
Okay.
So, just for clarification, we're still going to meet Thursday to set up the...
Let's, yeah, let's do that maybe as a separate motion?
Okay.
So, we'll vote on this first.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done, that motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so now, we would need a motion to direct the clerk and the attorney to put on the agenda, at your special meeting, that'll be held this Thursday, a discussion and possible approval of a schedule of fees and charges, which to be imposed for the filing and the processing of development agreements. and the processing of development agreements under this section of your LDC.
Before I move that, do you have an idea what other towns typically charge?
It's generally a little bit higher than typical application fees, just because there's multiple components to it. But no, I don't have a ballpark. It depends on the project, it depends on, and I will have that conversation with the town manager, as well as with staff. So at least we could start the conversation on Thursday.
Sarah, how much? Well, I, so, I move that...
Well, before you do, Scott, let's flush that out just a little bit more. Are we, when you prepare for Thursday, will you be looking at neighboring communities? Will you be comparing it to our own fee structure? All of the above? What will you be doing in preparation?
Well, I will work with staff, starting with our town manager, because it, it does have a fiscal impact on, you know, the town's revenues, to determine. I mean, if you're going for a site plan with deviations, and you, you're requesting three or four variances, I don't know what the current process is, as far as how much does that cost?
Well, when you say it has an impact on the town's fiscal, you don't mean the overall fiscal, you mean just the...
Well, the revenues from applying, and maybe the cost as far as the review process.
That all goes to the same fund, though, I guess, is my...
Right, there's going to be a lot of time on their hands that we've got to cover.
Yeah.
Can't make ridiculous, but we still have to cover our costs.
Yeah, no, no, I got you. I just, when you said overall fiscal, I think, it's just the, just for, just for the entity that does the approvals, because when you pay permit fees, it doesn't go to, to pay for utilities, or it just goes to help those who are processing the permits.
Right. And Andy, not to put you on the spot, but in former jurisdictions, do you recall maybe what the fees might have...
I really don't.
You don't? That's okay.
I'll have to go look.
Okay.
Perhaps in the motion to direct staff to bring examples or recommendations of fees, so we're not floundering up here for an hour, kicking back ideas. If you could have some examples of surrounding communities, or within the state, of their fee structure based on these development agreements, and recommendations based on what you, you guys know the island as well as anyone else, and you know the size of the projects that potentially are coming, and what time it will take to review this. I think your input as to what these fees should be to cover the cost of the town, to Counselor Safford's point, would be very beneficial to that discussion.
Yes, sir, I told you.
And I think, I mean, I think this sounds obvious, but just to state the obvious, I assume those fees will be based on the size of the project to some extent. I mean, we certainly want to charge a smaller entity the same that we're going to be charging a very large entity. Is that fair?
Oftentimes, on these types of projects, you're going to be, have a flat rate at the beginning, and then you're going to increase it based on additional acreage.
Okay.
In most communities, it's X rate plus, you know, this amount for each additional acre. We may look at a different way of viewing that in the town, because we do have a lot of smaller lots with a lot going on, on each of them, but usually it is based on size. Or we could look at it based on square footage of the proposed development. I mean, that's how building permits are done, but...
That sounds good.
It's an idea.
Yeah, it makes, I mean... Yeah, I don't have a problem with the square footage, I think.
Square footage makes sense. At a minimum, at least on Thursday, we'll start the conversation, and then if there's a final approval that's needed, maybe April the 15th meeting, you can approve it.
Okay. Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, so I move that on date certain, Thursday, April 4th, we discuss fees for the developmental deviations. At a special meeting, yes.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion by Counselor Safford, seconded by Counselor Woodson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously. Final public comment? Yes, sir? Come on up, Joe.
Joe Puglies, living next to Newton Park. I heard Chad say he was going to talk to the contractor tomorrow, or the next few days. Well, I spoke with the site supervisor last week. I asked him if he can move the heavy equipment a little further north away from my house. Take a wild guess what he did. He moved it closer to my house. I asked, also asked him when it was going to be done. He says, well, we'll be out of there by Tuesday, which obviously you heard from Chad was an out-and-out lie. Okay? I am getting tired of this, being lied to by different people that work for this town. Now, everyone here, and you can ask your attorney, now knows that a contractor that you have hired is damaging my house on a daily basis. Something needs to be done, or there will be legal consequences. It's as simple as that. I am not going to let this go on with no one doing anything about it. I suggest you do something immediately. I've already called my attorney, and he's preparing a motion right now.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in public comment? Hearing none, we'll close public comment. Town manager's items.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. We've talked about strategic planning. I'm going to send an email out this week to you three about some dates, coming up, the 26th of April, the 29th of April, or the 3rd of May, to see what works for you guys, but I'll send you an email. So we'll follow up with that shortly. Also, we have an open house that we planned for Thursday, but in light of adding some things to, you know, to a special meeting, and I think what we'll do is we'll postpone that and come up with another date, that there's not too much around that date, so we can have something more...
Forgot about that.
Without too much in here.
Understood, forgot all about that.
Yeah.
Readjust it.
No, no, that's fine. We, we've been tossing it about anyhow, since we had the, the meeting in the morning, and it just, some timing things with some staff not here. So it'll work out. We can, we can change it and just come up with a date, that we don't have any, any conflicts coming up in, in April.
Okay. And to, can, can you and the town, I mean, just talking on what the public comment we just had, perhaps you two need to be involved?
Sure. If he'd like to give me the name of his attorney, I can call his attorney.
Potentially. So can someone reach out? And, I mean, all right.
Attorney's name now, so Nancy can have that conversation.
And if we can verify if they did truly move stuff closer versus further away? Have a talk with, is it EarthTech, or whoever's doing that?
Yes.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Town attorney's items.
Nothing.
All right. Council member, items or report? Scott, we'll start with you.
I had, the question asked me, I mean, Kathy Turner did a great job with the, the garden club beautifying the Times Square area. Several years ago, the, the town used to do an Arbor, Arbor Day thing, where they sold palm trees at half price. Now, want to see if that's, that's an option that we can look at this year? I mean, everybody's trying to... Arbor Day is end of April, right?
I don't know.
That's definitely something we could do, sir, but I think we've kind of already missed that date, as far as getting in line for that.
Okay.
We've looked into several grants through the Arbor Day Foundation.
Right.
I know most of those you have to get prior to that, start of that year, to get in motion.
Can we look at doing it the next year?
We'll definitely work into it, yes, sir. We may not be able to do it on Arbor Day this year, but we may be able to do it at a later date this year.
Yeah, it'd be great.
We'll look into all those things for you, sir.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Counselor Woodson?
I just have a question on where we are with the food truck ordinance and changing the ordinance to really mean, mean more what we wanted it to mean?
Yes. So that one, I did do some research on it. I have met with staff. It's the proverbial onion. The more you peeled it back, the more I found. But we are going to try to have something before the LPA this coming month, and then it'll come to you thereafter.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Vice Mayor Etterholt?
I have nothing additional.
Okay. Counselor King?
I'll just, a personal note. To this day, three years ago, my wife and I officially became Floridites and moved here, and it's been quite a busy three years.
Cost even new hip and everything, I mean, this is...
And that's all I have.
Yeah, all right. The only thing I had is kind of piggyback on what Counselor Safford was talking about. We've got that funding that we received from Lee County for Estero Boulevard. We don't need to discuss today, I just want to see if we can get someone else to go along with me to add it as an M&amp;P item, to discuss potentially starting that project of beautifying Estero Boulevard, if you will, at the use, and the help of the garden club, who seem willing and able to, to want to get going. So if there's another person that's okay with adding that to a future M&amp;P meeting, maybe not this one coming up, but next month's, I think now is the time to kind of start. Now that we're starting to, we'll maybe start seeing less breakers, and we got some time, we can kick it around and make it look good. The other thing that I wanted to add, we can add it later, but it just made me think about, it kind of ties in with this. I remember visiting Dunedin one year, and I thought it was really cool, idea that we could maybe implement for our 501(c)(3)'s on the island, to let them decorate a pole, a light pole. So once these light poles are done on Estero Boulevard, they will be town-owned, so we can, we can do with them what we want. We don't need any permission from anyone to do that. And what they did is every group, didn't have to be a 501(c), decorated a pole around Christmas time. And it was really fun. They put lights on it, and everything was so unique, and one was a Snoopy, and one was, I mean, it was a really cool thing. I thought would be a neat thing to do, or at least discuss possibly doing. I think with all the 501(c)(3)'s we got, they would love to jump on board and, and decorate that, and just make it kind of a fun, funky, go along with the, the street signs that were made and stuff like that.
But a beach access.
Huh?
Maybe they could do a beach access.
Or beach accesses, yeah. I mean, there's all kinds of things that we could do, but I'll bring it up again later, but in case I forget, add it on, if it's okay, if that's, if I got another consent to...
Yeah, well, definitely consent, but will the poles have an outlet? An electric outlet on?
Good question. I don't know.
Just curious.
Solar, Jeff.
We could do solar, solar lights, don't have to be, well, that's the nice thing about the, when they die through the night, then they're not, they're not really bright. And of course, of course, they would be turtle compliant, so just...
Do they make turtle compliant solar lights?
Actually, Christmas is outside of that window, so...
Okay, although, there you go.
So we would be safe. All right.
They do have green ones.
That's it. All right. That's all I got for the, is there a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn, indulge me for a minute, Mayor.
Certainly.
As we sit here on this April Fool's Day, the old disc jockey in me is reminded of a Chris Ria song that's called Fool If You Think It's Over. And it is. Move to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Counselor King, seconded by Counselor Safford. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned at 12:39.